Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 14, 2021 Brookline School Committee meeting. It's actually our last scheduled meeting for this school year. We'll see if that holds. Probably not. We'll probably have something else, but at any rate, that's how it's scheduled. And we have, of course, a full, full agenda. And it's also an evening where we're going to recognize lots of people who helped us get through this very special year. We did not do it alone by any means, and we also got to say goodbye to some of our good friends who will be leaving us. And, and welcome to those who are staying on board. So the first item is our consent agenda. And do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Thank you, David. Do I have a second? Thank you, Stephen. Any comments, questions, thoughts about any of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I just want to point out one or two. We're accepting some gifts and grants. So I do want to just say thank you to individuals, I'm not going to name the individuals, but the PTO at Brookline High and many parents at Brookline High who contributed to the senior block party, AKA this year's prom, pandemic prom. And I also want to make sure to recognize the Innovation Fund, which is awarding $346,172 to programs at the, at the high school. So thank you so very much to the Innovation Fund. That's a tremendous amount of money and we are ever so grateful. So we will take a vote on, on this and let's go. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Who am I missing? Dimitri's not here yet. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and I vote yes as well. So thank you very much. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Claire Gallion, our student rep. And the good news is she's going to come back next year and be our student rep. So Claire, I'm really excited. You have done a fabulous job this year. You've taken this role to a whole new level with your surveys and your pictures and your videos and all that you've done. So the floor is yours and thank you so much.
Oh, thank you guys for such a wonderful year. I'm, I'm so excited for next year. And yeah, so I thought, well, I guess I'll be, I, I made a video for this time. I thought it'd be fun to do something like special for my last report of the year. And so I'm going to screen share it and let me know if you guys like can hear it. So this is it. Hope you guys enjoy. Hi there. My name is Claire Gallion and I'm the student representative on school committee. For my last presentation of this year, I decided to do something a little fun and create my very own TV show, What's the Word on the Quad? What's the Word on the Quad is just going around interviewing students and seeing what they're thinking right now. Cause it's, you know, only a few weeks away from the end of the school year. I decided to ask kids what their favorite part of this year was, what they should improve for next year, and what they're looking forward to for next year. So let's hop right in. Oh yeah. Also, what would a video about the quad be without extreme construction noise? So some of the parts of this video get a little loud, but I worked to transcribe it and put some subtitles. So hopefully that'll help. And yeah, so just a little warning. Hi there. This is What's the Word on the Quad with your host Claire Gallion. And here I'm going to be interviewing junior Helena. Hi Helena.
Hi.
Okay Helena, what was your favorite part about this year?
Probably getting to go back in person and have the SWS class experience. Having the in-depth discussion, everyone seeing all the connections that just couldn't be there over Zoom. It was really great to be back in that atmosphere.
Awesome. And what's something you're looking forward to for next year?
I'm a little scared of next year to be a senior, but I am looking forward to have all the new classes that are being offered. They seem really exciting. I'm excited to finally have the experience that all the seniors now are having.
Okay. Hi again. Now we are with sophomore Alice. So Alice, what was your favorite thing about this year?
My favorite day was this year was getting to come in person and seeing all of my friends. Getting to do a lot of cool work, getting clothes and taking care of friends.
Awesome. Environmental action, okay. I'm so happy for her. What's something you think could be improved for next year?
Something I think could be improved for next year, I don't know if student council has a, I think they have taken SROs.
Take SROs at the school. Okay. Okay. Now we're joined with the always iconic fellow SWS'er, major singing star Helen Eyes, who's also a junior. So Helen, what was your favorite part about this year?
I think my favorite part about this year was how teachers were forced to slow down and really look at like how, how much, how much structure they put on their students given the circumstances. To kind of believe in some of that. So that's what I was saying.
Yeah, it's great. What's something you're looking forward to for next year?
Oh goodness. First of all, a senior year, totally crazy year. I'm really looking forward to being able to, and it's already starting now, like people hugs and really just being able to, plus at least having aspects of community return again, such as our beloved video, hopefully get back to, because the extra space we have. And especially with that, it's really necessary for us to have a place where we can be as community and help each other and be with each other.
Okay, now we're joined with senior Julia, fellow SWS'er. So Julia, what was your favorite part about this year?
My favorite part about this year was actually, the majority of my classes, I really liked. A lot of the teachers this year were very nice and underpaid. And I really like SWS as an entity. This is my first year in it. You know, I like the advantage of like this loving community for years. And I'm just so happy.
So with all your senior wisdom you have, what's an improvement, even though you won't be at PHS this year, but what's an improvement that I hope that you have with your PHS?
I hope we address, actively addressing some of the issues, especially with several songs that they just like, um, we go for a number of them all the time. I hope we adjust also in addressing a lot of the challenges and racism. And I think especially during standard, it's really important to like acknowledge the fact that like, all the, a lot of things that, um, we're worried about, teachers of color are like, um, in, um, in the communities that like, it's so hard to run with or like, what do us care about, but are very necessary as mentioned, like struggling and we have to support.
Okay, now we have junior Jai. Hi Jai. What was your favorite part about this year?
Um, my favorite part was probably coming back and seeing everybody coming to school in person. And I'm really just trying to like having this environment where like I can talk to people rather than like sitting at home and being so nice.
That's great. What's an improvement you think that PHS could be for next year?
I think with homework assignments, they, uh, especially for seniors, I feel like this year's goal, it's been a lot. There's been a lot of homework. It would be nice if, um, if teachers of different subjects, like, you know, coordinated at least a little bit and try to like space things out a little bit more. So like, not everything's like only like twelve to twelve hours, and then like, and then like, like everything like, like double.
There's always those horrible weeks when like all your classes have to test for some reason. Great. So what's something you're looking forward to for next year?
Oh, so much. First of all, like, like, um, no more Zoom. Secondly, um, you know, senior year, I feel like the vibe is going to be a lot more different than now. I'm looking forward to, oh, Japanese. I initially, or I applied for the PHS last year. I hope I get it. And I hope, it sounds really exciting.
I hope you do too.
Yeah. And also I'm excited for the music collective.
Music collective.
Claire is also in the music collective and we're going to be seniors next year. So, senior power.
So yeah, that was What's the Word on the Quad. While it may look completely natural, like I just walked up to random students, I did ask people I knew. So there are a lot of SWSers in there, like low-key SWS plug. But yeah, I hope you guys enjoyed that. Just like a fun, sweet thing to end off the year. But yeah, I, I've had a great year with you guys and I'm so excited for next year.
Thank you so much, Claire. Helen?
Yeah. What are BHS ambassadors? I've never heard of that.
It's, um, like an organization at the school that works to help like new students. And I think specifically international students like adjust and so like hang out. I think they're the group that hosts the International Thanksgiving that happens, which is a pretty big event. So yeah.
Great. Yeah. Thank you.
And Claire, I noticed the music, just the two of us.
Yeah. Music collective.
That was, those are BHS students playing? That's great. Thank you so much. Thank you. You have been a delight. I look forward to next year. Jim, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I wasn't going to, but I can't stop myself. Claire, that was terrific. I really, you really do have a future in, in meeting with people and interacting and making people feel at ease. Just, just fabulous. It's really good that you're going to be serving on the school committee again next year. I think you brought some interesting issues to the fore, particularly during, you know, difficult times, and yet you allow other voices to be heard. So you really have value added. Thank, thank you, thank you for what you do. And it was fun, 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 you know? Sometimes meetings among adults can be boring, boring, boring. But you, you know, you add some spark to it that is just, you got the next Conan O'Brien coming out of, of, of Brookline. Look to you on a late night. No, seriously, you do a great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Or Barbara Walters.
There you go. Why, she's from Brookline?
Elementary school.
Yeah, I forgot that. Yeah. Well, Claire, enjoy your summer and you're welcome to stay as long as you want tonight. But of course you're welcome to leave and we will see you in the fall. It'll be great.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on. Interim superintendent's report.
Well Suzanne, you said that tonight we were going to be thanking a lot of people. But you know, as I was thinking about tonight and thinking, boy, what a year, what a year in terms of the stress, the difficulty, the, the whole challenge, not just in Brookline, but across the globe. And feeling it here in Brookline and how to deal with it has been really a challenge. It's been difficult for families, certainly. It's been difficult for school committee. It's been difficult for school folks and it's been difficult for students all along the way and the community at large. And so, you know, it really, it was an opportunity for people to come together and they rose up. You think about the educators in the schools, just really great appreciation to the educators, the teachers who had to deal with constant change. And as the pandemic moved in its own way, the, that was reflected in what happened in school. So teachers had to be very nimble, peril professionals. Think about them. Kept classes going, sometimes doing jobs that, they had to pitch in and be themselves flexible. They were relied on tremendously. Specialists to keep all those other programs going and, you know, you're singing and you're having physical education during the pandemic. Art classes, world language, all going and trying to maintain a sense of forward movement. Very challenging. Librarians were using the libraries in a multitude of different ways. Libraries, librarians were very flexible and providing their space for multitude of use with a happy, quite a positive spirit. And the technology specialists, so that, you know, technology was, was the order of the day to keep people communicating. Really amazing. And look at our support staff. Then they're going to be continually called upon over the course of the next year, special education staff, really meeting a multitude of needs that were developing through all of this. Our counselors and social workers now trying to figure out how are we going to bring all of this together? Our nurses, the wonderful nurses who were dealing with the health issues of themselves, I'm sure had some concerns. And yet they were serving others and not really thinking about themselves. And you know, the school secretaries, we all know that the secretaries run the world and they certainly run the schools. And there they were every single day, maybe giving people that sense of security that things were really going to be in place and be okay. And, and of course, our administrative assistants that, you know, truth be known, they are, they are the ones that make it happen too. So really absolutely incredible when you think about how people pull together. And you know, our administrators, sometimes we take them for granted. I think about the principals who were really, had to be all things to all people and dealing with the uncertainty themselves and yet had to answer questions in a definitive way when it was really uncertain. Our vice principals, oh my word. The vice principals who are right on the front lines dealing with teachers and students and lunches and all sorts of things continually. And the senior staff, the senior staff, really pulling together as a team and dividing themselves out up so they could really stay in contact with schools and stay together and nurture the schools as much as possible and try themselves to keep a steady hand going through. And look at our curriculum coordinators, helping, helping teachers, helping teachers while they were teaching in a remote setting and whether they were in hybrid and then in person. But the curriculum stayed the course, materials were provided and the spirits were as high as it could possibly be. The central office staff, you know, they're, they're not very often seen, but to me, it's a little bit like at Fenway Park, you don't see the person who puts the score up behind that big green wall, who changes the light when the light bulb goes out. But without them, the game gets very confusing and you don't know what's happening. Without that central office staff, things get very confusing. So really have to hats off to them. And our special education directors, trying to keep all this stuff organized, trying to meet the needs of kids and trying to do that in a way that communications feels supportive, supportive. It's, it's been a real pleasure to work with a professional group of people that you'll hear it over and over, it takes a village. Boy, I'll tell you. The people who work in the public schools of Brookline, they stepped up. Every one of them deserves a tremendous amount of credit. I'm really hopeful that after next week, people will be able to take a deep breath and, and catch up on their own lives because they've given their heart and soul through the entire time of this pandemic, not knowing exactly how it was going to come out. So the anxiety was very high, but once people got to work, they put their own personal needs aside and they focused on their jobs. And I saw that day after day after day. So I say hats off Suzanne. That's what I really wanted to say to the whole staff. And by the way, even though you guys don't get a lot of credit either, but the school committee who was able to provide guidance, direction, support, and mostly a sense of keeping whole, keeping whole by talking with each other, fielding, you know, questions from the community, working with the, with the administrators and trying to say, we can find the balance here. And so kudos to the school committee and their work as well. I think I also should say, quite frankly, Big, you know, when you think about Brookline Interactive Group, and I think they're probably on here as well. Nobody would know what we would have. They had, they, they really broadcast everything and they were able to keep the, the whole flow of this, of the, the whole town's work, but certainly the school's work. So we really are very appreciative of them. And Suzanne, you may want to say a few things as well in terms of recognizing Big and the people who run Big.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. I would. Let me just run through some of the names of the staff for Big because they've, they're even on tonight. Of course, they're on with us all the time. So Kathy Bisby and Tice, Corbin Riedel, Andrew Doink, Dan Rodriguez, Rebecca Zinner, and Ian Bauer. Those are all staff of Big. Many of them join us every time we have a meeting. But they're also recording and broadcasting our subcommittee meetings and our hearings. And so I have to say, I have been impressed not only with how seamless the whole process has been around recording and getting people in and out and speakers and public comment, but also, and I think we said this in our statement, the, the increase in community involvement with our meetings. The, our meetings have been viewed by hundreds upon hundreds of people. I mean, it's just, it's really amazing that people can be at home and we're isolated and, and we were doing our thing for the pandemic, but people were engaged. They were calling in, they were watching, they were sending us emails, responding to what we said. So thank you certainly to Big and thank you to the, to the public for all their input, all their help. I know we didn't always agree on things. We probably won't in the future either, but it's important to hear from everybody. And we certainly have. And you know, we would have 30, 35 people at public comment on nights. We had, I think I saw one was like seven or 800 views on a meeting that we had. So people really cared in the community and really followed us and, and let us know when they thought we were doing a good job and when they thought we were not. Probably more when we were not. You know, it's okay if they let us know if we did a good job as well. So I'm just going to plug in for that. So thank you, Big, as well. Anything else, Jim?
No, I, I, I think that we can't say thank you enough. And it's a funny thing that it's the end of the year when we make it a point to say thank you. But really throughout the year, we should remember that in order for it to happen, it's the people who are working so hard behind the scenes. And we should remember to say thank you more often, but in any event, we're saying thank you tonight.
And we will be saying more thank you. It's kind of sprinkled throughout the meeting tonight. So if you think you owe, you're owed a thank you, just stay tuned and we'll probably get to you. At least we certainly hope so. Certainly hope so. Okay. We're going to move on to food services. So Sasha Palmer, you're our director. You're up next. As I said earlier to some folks, if your presentation is short, you'll have more time to hear kudos from us. So because many of us did see, so just to let people with the public and people know, Sasha presented to the finance subcommittee and I think seven of nine of us were there. And that, that press, that full presentation is recorded and available for viewing. So Sasha, go right ahead.
Sasha, you're on mute.
All right. Sorry about that. I was having technical difficulties. And I will keep my presentation short so that we at least can get some of those kudos. So food services has been tried and tested throughout this year. We have, let me present. We have been operating since the pandemic started non-stop. We started in March and continued through the summer of last year. And we are still going and we will continue throughout the summer of, of this year. When we, we began USDA start, USDA offered a number of waivers that allowed our program to operate. We, we were operating by offering free meals to kids, to all students in the districts 18 and under. And this process or this, these waivers will continue through the rest of the school year, 20, till June 2022. Because of the number of waivers that we had, we have been offering a number of different ways for families to participate. And we have seen steady increase in that participation across the district. We encourage families to continue to participate. We are offering meals throughout the summer. We are not taking a break. We will be operating our summer program. Um, just to give a brief background of or update on what was happening during the 2021 school year, 20, the 2020 to 21 school year. So we started off with a new software where we offer families the opportunity to preorder their, their, their kids' meals. And we did have some hiccups. It was a fairly new software. We had a number of complaints in the beginning and those complaints have been steadily decreasing. We continue to ask that and, and we, we, we appreciate the support that the community and the patience that they showed while we were experiencing these difficulties. With that, families still participated. We found, the department found ways of getting meals to kids and getting the word out that when we were having problems. We started, and, and this is one of our, a very high participation rate. We, we had remote, the RLA students participating in picking up, picking up meals at a later time during the day. So we had our remote meal pickup schedule. That continued throughout the year. We were offering families a convenient time of between five and 6:00 PM to pick up those meals. And as a result, we saw quite a high participation, participation rate. I must say that I just added, I have to let families know that that will still continue. However, we will have, because school ends on the 22nd, we are also offering meals on the 25th. The RLA families can pick up meals on the 25th to last them through the remainder of the days before the summer program begins. So families can pick up meals on the 25th to last them through June 6th, when the new summer program begins. And that's when we offer meals every single day at various locations. One of the great things about the, the, the program this year is that we saw increased participation across the board. We saw participation especially in breakfast and it was the area that has the most room for improvement. Breakfast participation has not been, um, high participation in breakfast. This year we saw more and more families participate and we hope that this will continue throughout the next school year. We are going to be focusing on breakfast program and encourage families to participate. We're always happy to include fresh, healthy local foods in our breakfast program. And that's something that we'll be focusing on next year. Lunch participation also increased and I, I, we're very appreciative to those families who came out, especially in RLA, that red line shows the participation of the students who were in RLA or families who picked up after the end of the school day. Continuing on, we had a very, a fairly rough patch with staffing and as with a reflection of what's happening out there, where there are a number of open positions. We had a number of management positions that were open for most of the year. Some parts of the year it was intentional because we were operating centralized kitchens because of the reduced number of meals that we were producing. So as a result of centralizing the kitchen, there was no need to have all the school managers position filled. As students started to return to the, the online or the campus or the, the school buildings, we started filling out those positions. As of today, we have almost all our positions filled and managers are working. A lot of them are coming out of, or, or some of them we got from other school districts and others we, we had who were working in corporate restaurants or hotels. So the budget for 2021 budget is, when we projected, we actually project that we may just barely break even because we were very new to anticipating what the just barely break even because we were very new to anticipating what the participation rate would be. And because our revenue is mostly dependent on federal reimbursement, which is dependent on participation, it was very hard to predict what, what, how the participation would be. So far, we are not looking, we are looking to end the school year with a surplus. It may be a little more or a little less based on what happens in the next few days. I'm hoping it will be more, but so far we, we are happy and confident that it will end up in the positive. Some of the reasons for the, the, the increase are, are us not ending up with a deficit is one, we increased revenue in all areas, sales, which we, I didn't anticipate that we would have any sales at all. We did have a little something catering. And we also had a huge dent in what could have been worse through, we got a grant from the COVID grant, which gave us a significant amount of money for, to purchase food. So that helped with the rising cost of food, that helped to push and blow a bit. We also have to attribute this to the increased participation. And we couldn't have done anything, we couldn't, we couldn't have generated that amount of revenue without the, the participation of the community and of the families who really was patient with us and stick with us throughout the difficult times I participated. Another impact was our expense and this was a bit reduced because we, we centralized some of the kitchen and we weren't spending that much money on personnel. And another expense, a significant increase in expense because of the, the, the shortage of staff, we spent a little more than we had anticipated on overtime hours. And I, I cannot, I cannot say this often, how grateful the food service department is for parents, for families who stuck with us. It, it, it's one of the, the, the things that made most of our food service staff get up every day at the difficult time and go out and work is the support that we receive from the entire community. So we want to say thank you. And, and thank you to our, our hardworking food service staff. I, I, they've, they're so resilient and hardworking and we really appreciate them for doing that. Twenty twenty-two, planning or looking ahead for to twenty twenty-two, we are starting as early as July. We are offering, continuing to offer all kids and teens a free meal during the summer. And we will be operating from a number of locations and some of those locations that we are finalizing. But some of them are our regular location, the BHA properties, the Pear School Playground as well as the Baker School Place Playground, just to give families access from across the entire district. We want to also, we are still working with our summer partners. We worked with them last year and they were off, they were a huge help to distribution, to communication, to marketing and, and just very giving, hand, giving us labor to hand meals out during that time. The, the, one of our partner offered arts and craft in the, the park that kids can come out, have a meal and enjoy some art and craft. So because our, our program is, we're new to summer as summer program for an entire district. Usually when we offer summer programs, we're offering it just to students or kids who are enrolled in a closed program or enrolled in a summer program in the district for this year. And due to the fact that we have those waivers, we are offering free meals like we did last, towards the end of last year to all families across the district. Where if you have a kid that's eight, eighteen or under, they can come out, participate, there's no question asked. We do want, we do want to encourage participation because as I said, it is directly tied to the district and the department receiving those federal revenues. So to do this and to promote this event, to get families out, and I know a lot of us are locked in our office or somewhere in our house, we want to get people out and moving and enjoying and, and, and meeting some of those hardworking food service staff that you have been seeing throughout the year. So we will be having a kickoff, a fun community event. It will be, we are calling it Feeding Brookline because that's what we are hoping food service is doing. It will be at the Pierce School Playground on July seventh. If it rains, we'll have it on the eighth. It starts at four and then at six. And this event is promoting the summer meal program, encouraging families and, and just, just giving them information on how to access school meals, whether now or throughout the, the coming school year. This event, we've partnered with a number of our very hardworking partners. Brookline Thrives, who has been with us along the way through all this. The Brookline Housing Authority, we do service most or some of their facilities or their, their complexes. We're partnering with Parent Child Plus, Women Thriving, the Teen Center, the Brookline Water Club and has, and the Mothers Out Front. Looking towards twenty twenty-two, those of where, where continuing to, to strive and hopefully we can have and participate in these future initiatives that we, we have always been anticipating that this is where we want to take the department. A number of groups inside the, the district have already applied to the Massachusetts Farm to School Institute. And this is an institute that help us to streamline the number of grade farm to school program or number of initiatives that's geared toward local sourcing, community building and, and sustainable, sustainability and garden education. We're all collaborating to join those, join together and focus our energy into one end goal. So we have applied, we are waiting on, awaiting news to hear if we're accepted. Other green initiative, we are continuing to seek funding or sourcing to grow our own organic vegetable. This is where a lot of school districts are going because we do spend a lot of money on microgreens or green vegetables. And it would be nice to have it hyper locally sourced by growing our own in our cafeterias. We're also looking at funding and these are through grants which we have applied to. We're looking for funding to fund dishwasher so we can move away from the single-use utensils that we have been using. And this year has really opened up us to seeing how much we're spending on the reusable, the, the single-use items. And we want to try and see how best we can, not only help the environment, but it is also good for our bottom line. So we are trying to move back to purchasing reusables. And so we're looking for funding to, to, to purchase those machine, those, those dishwashers. Most schools do have, we have three or four schools who don't. And we're, we're trying to get those up and running. And also if we are growing our own, if we're producing those food, we want to extend the shelf life of those organic foods. So we want to fund ways and find creative ways in not just using sustainable materials, but also purchase a sealing machine that would at least extend the shelf life of the food. For the twenty twenty-two budget projection, because we are continuing to receive, all meals are free. We're all, we're looking to capitalize on that, encourage families to participate. These numbers are based on where we are, the participation rate now. I'm hoping to see some improvement or increase in the participation and that may be a bit ambitious of me, but I'm hoping that the families will continue to participate in the program to bring in those federal revenues. So we are, we are not projecting, we are not projecting that we will, if participation continues or if the trend of participation continues, we're not looking to project any, to be at a, operating at a deficit next year. I know I've been going a long time. I, I want to really stop and thank the food service staff for the, the, the year that we've had. We would not have had a year that we had if it not had been for the dedicated food service staff who was out there during the snow, during the cold and, and, and just be there and always smiling and happy to be servicing, to be offering that service to the, the community. The staff, the administrators, we wouldn't have been able to do it without our administrators who were very supportive of, of everything we did. And when we had to make changes overnight, they were always there and on board to support us through those changes. We've had staff going in and helping out, giving a helping hand and we really appreciate that. We definitely would not have done it, have been able to do it without the help of administrators in the buildings. And I want to give a special thanks to a very hardworking group of volunteers who have been with us since COVID. They have been with us before, but they really stepped up through COVID and they are with us. I'm hoping that they continue to be with us into next year because they offer such a valuable service to us. They are from many different groups, there's, they're from mothers out front, their parents in the district. And they, they offer every help that they can from communication to just going about and doing work themselves, handing out meals and so on to us. So I want to say thank you to all of them. We do appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you Sasha. You did it, you did it quickly, thank you. We have some time for comments or questions. I think Matt Gillis wants to be first. Matt, are you there?
I am here, thank you. I just had to take care of some, some family stuff tonight and I missed this on my agenda, but I caught the, the last five minutes of Sasha's presentation. Yeah, I'd like to thank Sasha and Tess for all their work as the Food Service Director and Assistant Food Service Director to deal with all the changes that came their way and being short-staffed and being in the kitchen and getting parent volunteers and using other operations staff that helped out along the way. A lot of changes this year, setting up the partnership with the Brookline Housing Authority to be able to have food drop-offs. You know, we, we've kind of come a long way through a dynamic year and, and next year, it seems like it's going to be a little bit similar, at least with the way the federal program is structured. So same rules as this year, so we'll be offering it looks like food on, on off-school days as well for, for pickup. So a lot of changes in one year and I, I think they handled it well with a lot of grace and were able to feed a lot of kids that in some cases maybe might not have been able to have a decent meal. So I really want to thank them for all their effort. I think it's paid off pretty well.
Thank you, Matt. Other questions, comments, thoughts? Jennifer, then Mariah.
I just want to say again, and I think I did this at the subcommittee meeting, but I am, I'm so appreciative. Thank you so much and I, I really, it was a wonderful job. We picked up, our family picked up for our children and through the RLA and folks were out there every week in the cold and the rain, in the freezing cold wind. And they were always there helping out. There were a lot of community volunteers, we saw Brookline Thrives there. It was just a community effort to, to get food into the hands of kids. And you know, it was a really complex working piece with people making sort of reserving online for in-school consumption and then take-home packages. And there's a lot of moving parts and then the RLA and they were, it was just amazing, well-coordinated. I thought it was very well-coordinated and I'm just very appreciative of yourself and all of the staff and the community volunteers. I just can't say thank you enough, it was really wonderful and I'm so very excited that we'll be able to get even more, more, we'll get more food into more kids hopefully this coming year where we did, we're off to a great start. So I really hope people continue to participate. Thank you Sasha and to your whole team.
Mariah.
I just want to echo the thanks to Sasha and the team. I got to volunteer, I think right before February vacation at the high school and it blew my mind, like the amount, just the like sheer amount of food that goes into feeding so many children. It's really hard to, I mean, you kind of could get it, but you don't really get it until you're there just seeing the massive, massive amount of food. I was in the high school cafeteria and literally every counter and like all of the floors were covered in like paper bags filled with food to send home to families for the break. And it was just, it was amazing. So really, the logistics are wild and especially to think of how you did that short-staffed is like just, you know, my kudos. It really, really, really is such an amazing job by you and, and the team. I had one little question, which was, and I didn't get a chance to ask this at finance. My kids participated in Calculus Project and Calculus Project, the emails have gone out saying that there is no breakfast and lunch. Is that possibly a misunderstanding? Because as I understood what you said Sasha, all of the programs over the summer are going to have access to food. Is that right?
Yes, they all have access to food. We are sending out, where is the Calculus program? Is it at the old Lincoln?
I think it's at Old Lincoln, yep. Both of them are.
We are providing meals at Old Lincoln. I'm not sure, there are a number of groups there. I think Steps is there as well and we are offering meals to every single program that is in the building and everyone that's outside.
Okay, so maybe it's just an opportunity to double check with all the program directors to make sure that, because I, like you say, I think it's just a lot going on and people may have just missed that. But it's great to know that that's also going to be another program that will have that. Thanks, thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I just want to say Sasha, I remember, was it two years ago when we were interviewing you? And I'm pretty proud that we picked you, I think. There was a year where we spent a lot of hours on food services and instead you're just, you're just flying with it and making it happen. And I just really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. It, it has been great to see the amount of food and, and provisions that we are offering to our families. So thank you so much for that. Thank you for accepting our offer and coming aboard.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here, I'm enjoying it.
Good, that's great. Okay, I think Sasha, you're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you're also welcome to go and have your evening to yourself. So thank you so much for coming. We're now going to move on to the recognition of remote task force advisory panels. And I think Dr. Merini and Susan Wolf-Ditkoff, I think I'm turning it over to you.
This is one of those things, it's such a treat really. There are, there are very many communities that are able to have panels of true experts in the community step up. They have busy lives too, you know, but step up and give of their time to help. And it's about an altruistic venture, as you can imagine. And we drew on their expertise, used them as thought partners and benefited greatly from the experience. But I'm going to ask Susan Wolf-Ditkoff, who I believe worked with the school committee last year to develop such a support organization, put it in place. So Susan, maybe you could help really bring some well-deserved recognition to this effort.
Sure, I'm happy to. Good evening, everyone. This has been an absolutely incredible eighteen months, a year like no, like no other, thirteen, eighteen, fifteen months, depending on where you count. So in the next twenty minutes or so, I thought we could just spend a few minutes reflecting on just a few of the highlights of what the panels did and thank all of the panel members for the incredible work and the time that they put into making these recommendations a reality. And we'll also have our staff who led, kind of were the liaisons to the panels, bring some of their perspectives in to tell us sort of how it went and, and how, how it worked from their perspective. So thank you to the many panel members who are joining us here today. We have the co-chairs, I think many of them on video and I'll get to those introductions in a moment. I'm also mindful that we're nine minutes ahead of schedule, I think. So I expect people to be trickling in as we go. So let me first start with a little bit of context. The first is that on March twelfth of twenty twenty, which was a Thursday night, I think some of you may remember it very, very well. well. Um, late that night, um, the superintendent with the advice and, um, potentially urging of the school committee, uh, declared that school would be closing effective immediately. So we didn't even go back Friday. Um, it's hard to remember back that far, but at the time, we were talking about two weeks. Um, that was March 12th. Um, some of the most pessimistic people were talking about a month, um, until after April break. Um, you know, of course, little did we know. Um, but it became quickly clear that, you know, public education in this country, um, was facing the biggest crisis in our country's 244-year history. Um, by, by late March, um, the school committee realized that the public schools would need not only to make dramatic shifts in teaching and learning and in how we supported the whole child, social, emotional wellness, physical safety, um, and many more things, um, but that we would need support as a school committee, the superintendent's office needed support, our educators needed support, we all needed support. Uh, so the school committee voted to convene a task force on remote learning and reopening, uh, in order to provide some of this, you know, direct guidance to, uh, the school committee and the superintendent, um, and, and, uh, for, for remote learning, generally speaking, during the emergency. Um, and at the time, the mandate for the task force was to set, um, educational goals for the district, um, during the epidemic and improve sort of communication and clarity and understanding, um, among all the people who are trying to pull together, all the adults who are trying to pull together, um, to make, um, an outstanding education for, for our students. So all of our educators, all of our families, all of our staff. So initially, we envisioned a task force that, um, consisted of representatives from every building, staffed by a very small but nimble working group of seven or eight members, um, including educators and school committee and PSB administrators. Uh, and we want to start off with sort of district-wide learning goals as the anchor and kind of go from there. Um, within about a month, in the spirit of rapid learning and adjustment, we were already at version 2.0 of our idea. Um, so Sharon Abramowitz, um, who was a school committee member at the time, and I were co-chairs, and we just realized it was a huge challenge to pull together all the individuals noted above. And also, we realized we were going to require a lot of outside expertise, um, that we didn't have in the district, um, given the magnitude of the challenges. Um, and our educators needed support, our staff needed support, we needed support. So, um, in the April-May timeframe, we sort of put out a call for experts and we got an overwhelming response from the community. Um, just as Dr. Merini said, Brookline is truly blessed, um, not only by the caliber of our residents, but also just their willingness to, uh, to serve. Um, and these are people who are, you know, top experts in their field and they were on demand for their expertise at exactly this moment in their professional lives. You know, this is the prime time for them as well, in addition to dealing with everything that, you know, the rest of us were dealing with in terms of parenting and being guardians, um, and that, that many people were facing. So, um, nevertheless, these are four panels, uh, committed to weekly and bi-weekly meetings for at least six months. Um, each panel had their own co-chairs and really the model was that the co-chairs, along with the panels, would set the agenda. Um, we did not want this to be sort of top-down. We wanted each of these sets of experts to help us identify what the issues were and work closely directly with staff to figure out where's the highest and best use of their time. This was, nobody wanted to make work, um, sort of activity people were too busy, um, and too, um, too overwhelmed at the time for that. So it really was, um, the leadership of the co-chairs of each panel who drove their agenda. Um, and so in addition to these weekly meetings of each panel, um, there were parent leaders from each building who represented, I would say, sort of the core of our Friday morning meetings, which started off as an hour, hour and a half, and sometimes went as long as two, three hours, just as everybody tried to kind of get on the same page about what we were learning. And, and the parent leaders from the building, um, I'll list them in a second, but it really did include not only sort of PTO site council, but Metco, Steps to Success, CPAC, Extended Day, English Learners, all, um, types of voices were very important to us. Um, so the people on the Friday morning can, group, um, were Tanya Alvarado, uh, of Metco, representing Metco Parents, and also the World Language K8 Department Head, um, Todd Chan from Florida Ruffin Ridley, Grace Farenbach from Lawrence, Ryan Garmes from Driscoll, Matthew Hawk from HEAT, Ellen Lenock from the Brookline Extended Day, Linda Monack from CPAC, Susan Park from RLA PTO, Devin Powell from Runcle, Kimberly Richardson from Steps to Success, Tiffany Rennie from Pierce, Marcy Sax from Baker, Krata Shaw from Runcle, and Eli from HEAT. And we then had the panels themselves, which again, I'll, I'll, um, run through, there are about 50 names. So I, I don't want to do them quickly, but I will sort of try to move through them. Uh, panel one was educational excellence and equity. Um, the co-chairs were Lisa Gerdin and, uh, Dr. Canaan McKenzie. The members were Dr. Shahara Bramovich, Ms. Miriam Fine, Dr. Sarah Whitman, Mr. Eager Golger, Andrea Gross, Lilja Lee, Ola Aldrinov Palchek, Ilya Rifkin, Dr. Lisa Wisman-Wile. Panel two, uh, was to support, um, the whole child experience and wellness. Our co-chairs were Dr. Lindsay Fallon and Dr. Amanda Turlo. Uh, our members were, uh, Mr. Brian Agersia, Hiroko Aspe, Lauren Bernard, Shella Denary, Sanjali Gidwani, Amanda Grinstaff, and Beth Jones. Expert Advisory Panel Three around remote learning and capacity building. Um, we, our first two co-chairs were Dr. Anne Kaufman-Fredrick and Dr. Janet Rankin. Um, and when Ms. Kaufman-Fredrick had, Dr. Kaufman-Fredrick had to step down for personal reasons, um, Ms. Anne Spencer picked up for her, um, ably. The other members were Mr. Stephen Albanese, Dr. Brad, Bradley Coleman, Dr. Stephen Ehrenberg, who is now a school committee member, Ms. Beth Kaufman-Cramer, Dr. Dan Levy, Ms. Sally Madson, Mr. Dave Myers, Ms., Mr. Michael Neer, uh, Ms. Churchill Silverman, and Mike Topol, Professor Mike Topol. Uh, finally, Expert Advisory Panel Four, the co-chairs are, uh, Dave Gashak and Elena Savoya. Um, our members included Lon Denny, uh, Dr. Ben Linas, uh, Dr. Nero Pollock, Boris Perlovski, Dr. Serena Radaban, Dr. Vish, Dr. Vishaka Saberwall, Dr. Ben Summers, Dr. Lakshman Swamy, and Dr. Jenny Tam, and Suriya Chung, as well as all of our partners on the Advisory Committee in Public Health here in Brookline. Um, so the, as when Sharon stepped down, Mariah and Andy, um, were also partners in crime. So, um, we have many, many points of contact, um, within the school committee for, for these panels. So, so thank you to everyone. I expect folks might want to say a few words afterwards. Um, this next bit is dangerous just because I can't name everyone, but I really do want to give folks a sense of the caliber of the people we were, who were advising us on these panels, just because the names sometimes don't really convey it. Um, so I will embarrass a few people, uh, but just know that I could have picked any of the 50-some names. Um, so Panel One Co-Chair, Dr. Canaan McKenzie, uh, is the Director for the Aspire Institute at BU, formerly Wheelock College. Aspire supports the pre-K through 12 educational sector, uh, with professional development in a social justice framework. Canaan immigrated to the US at the age of seven and has degrees from Cornell, UVA, and Teachers College, and she has been appointed to the Racial Imbalance Advisory Committee of Massachusetts. Um, as you may be able to guess, personally, I was very devastated when Canaan's family moved out of Brookline. However, she was such a star that she went on to become, um, appointed as a school committee member, um, in her new home, uh, which is the city of Beverly.
It's seven o'clock.
Oh, my computer's telling me it's seven o'clock. I need to hurry up. Okay. Uh, Panel Two, uh, Co-Chair, Dr. Amanda Turlo is the Director of the Brain and Early Experiences Laboratory at BU. She's an associate professor. She studies the effects of how early life stress influences developing young brains, both normative and atypical neural and behavioral development. She directs the doctoral program in developmental science and was a fantastic co-chair for our whole child, um, social, emotional learning, wellness, and resilience, um, panel. Um, I don't only want to focus on the co-chairs. All of the members were outstanding. So as an example from Panel Three, Dr. Dan Levy is the Faculty Director of the Harvard Kennedy School Flagship Online Learning Initiative. He also co-founded Teachly, which is a web application that aims to support faculty in teaching more effectively and inclusively. Uh, he also literally wrote the book on teaching effectively with Zoom, which obviously went viral, um, last year as that became the number one topic for educators around the country and around the world. Uh, so fantastic contributor to our remote learning, um, pedagogy panel. Uh, Panel Four, could have picked any of them, but I'll start with two candidates for Brookline Resident of the Year, Dr. Nero Pollock and Dr. Jenny Tam. Dr. Pollock is the Lead Researcher on the Most Important Studies of COVID Testing and Efficacy. Her work was featured in the New York Times multiple times during our project. Um, and it was always sort of a quiet Friday. If somebody on Panel Four wasn't featured on CNN or the New York Times or something, um, every week it was something. Um, but Dr. Pollock's research focuses on the development and evaluation of novel diagnostics for infectious diseases, proof of principle laboratory demonstration to field implementation. Um, and we could not have had a better advisor as we tried to stand up our own testing program. Um, and her partner in crime, Dr. Jenny Tam, as at the WIS Institute. Um, I have to say that I did not understand most of the words in Jenny Tam's bio, so I'm not going to try to pronounce them. All I will say, um, is that you should Google her. Um, but she studies how pathogens interact with the human immune system and a lot of other words I don't understand. So I'll just leave that there. She also holds an appointment as an instructor in genetics at Harvard Medical School. Uh, both Nira and Jenny were absolute linchpins in not only our own efforts, but also multi-district efforts, um, and a multi-district collaborative that advocated not only for Brookline and some of the wealthier districts, but also some of the districts that did not have as many resources. And they were highly committed to scalable solutions that worked for districts of all, um, income levels. So I, I could do this for everyone. I won't because we're already after seven o'clock. Um, I've already left out, um, one of, um, President Biden's top appointees in his administration, who directs health policy for our entire country. Um, he's in the Deputy Assistant Secretary for Planning Evaluation, um, Dr. Ben Summers, who we actually lost halfway through the panel process when he, when he got appointed in Washington. So now that you have a sense of who they are, um, I thought I would be, uh, just remiss without outlining a few of the highlights of each of their panels, um, and then turn it over to each of the staff liaisons, um, and how it went from their perspective. Um, we also spent at least two hours, maybe a little more, at curriculum meetings a few months ago. Um, so Jennifer Monopoly, who's the Curriculum Chair, might want to share any thoughts there, um, as to the depth of the work, that came out. There are hundreds and hundreds of, um, pages of documents and just real reading and learning for all of us. So let me start with Expert Advisory Panel One. Um, I'll say a few things, then I'll turn it over to Meg Messini, who's our, our LA principal. Uh, Panel One had four focus areas. Um, the first was around universal design and learning, um, effectively promoting learning across a wide range of students. Um, so this is educational excellence with equity. Uh, the second one was around differentiating remote learning, uh, to maximize engagement for students who need interventions, documented interventions. The third was around students who need, all students need consistent information and instructions and scheduling and clarity about how to access and participate effectively in the hybrid learning environment, um, especially for students who need more assistance accessing the information, um, what, what supports their caregivers need as well. And finally, building relationships with all families and caregivers and really giving a sense of continued support, um, all the way through the process, um, and identifying issues as early as possible. Um, certainly, they had things like, um, having one developmentally appropriate platform for any given grade level that was consistent and clear was a real problem last year, and the PSB did a phenomenal job with that piece this year. You know, preparing families, helping families know where to go and how to navigate toolkits and, um, and engagement frameworks, um, as well. So there were many things that we couldn't do, couldn't implement, great ideas. Um, but, um, Meg, maybe you can give us a sense of how this worked, just from your perspective, one slice, um, kind of RLA perspective and how some of these things played out.
Sure. I'm glad to. Thanks, Susan. Well, we had a wonderful, um, and very talented committee that had amazing recommendations. And, um, I just wanted to offer a few, as you said, a few, um, thoughts based on my experience in RLA. So, um, recommendation to provide structures and support to increase the chances that all students can access remote learning. As you mentioned, RLA and the other eight K to eight schools use Seesaw, Google Classroom, and Canvas as our learning management platforms. And, um, staff members across the district received regular opportunities and participated in professional development to learn how to seamlessly incorporate these learning management systems into their classrooms. Um, we also at RLA used a variety of other sorts of software and programs to supplement, um, uh, Seesaw, Google Classroom, and Canvas to allow for greater engagement in classes. And some examples are PairDeck and Flipgrid. Um, they, these were used, um, in Padlet throughout the year and with students and, um, up until the very end, which has been really great. Um, recommendation number three, focusing on key elements that have been shown to be the most effective across the widest range of subjects and students. This was where our essential curriculum work really came into play. For the past three years, the Office of Teaching and Learning has led the curriculum coordinators to define and refine the PSB Essential Curriculum. And this work is proven invaluable. Um, so for the past year, the Office of Teaching and Learning has provided just a discreet list of essential learning standards in each grade band, K to H, which really guided the work at the K to eight schools. And this was very important, especially during this year. So, um, Michelle Herman really worked hard to make sure that across the system, we knew these were the essential standards during the pandemic we were focusing on. And it really made a huge difference in helping us as principals, I think, to focus on, um, you know, uh, curriculum in schools and, in the standards in schools. Um, in RLA, our, the key elements that we focused on, which I believe is focused on in all of our Brookline schools, uh, good instruction is focused on relationships and engagement with students, classroom organization and structure, agenda, warm-ups, summarizers, assessments. Um, we at RLA had a really great year around problem-based and project-based instruction and learning. Um, an example of this was an eighth grade, um, class developed by Jacqueline Hallow and Kathy Conti called Towards a More Perfect Union. Um, these teachers really worked hard, um, to develop this course out of issues that students brought to them. And they collaborated, their, um, social studies teacher and an ELA teacher to develop a humanities course that was very rich and actually engaged students from the high school to come and mentor the eighth-grade students. And, um, when our eighth graders go over to the high school, they're all set up with, I mean, the whole class is with these wonderful relationships. Um, recommendation four, leveraging possibilities of synchronous and asynchronous modes to the maximum benefit and using various tools and practices to accomplish recommendation three aims. So we really, uh, provided, I'll speak at RLA, um, synchronous and asynchronous opportunities for kids to learn. So synchronously, we provided, um, a lot of community building and socialization opportunities. This year, um, RLA had classroom grade level and grade band theme meetings. We had, um, students participating, again, through Flipgrid, answering important questions around themes of the meeting. And our, our community means really focused socially, emotionally around the circle of wonderful that Dr. Chris Moynihan implemented beautifully. So every, every themed meeting, um, we would feature our students reflecting on a question of kindness or, um, what they, what they care about, about their peers or, um, something like that. And then asynchronous work, we embedded, uh, embedding pause points and questions in short videos that deliver content or, or instruction. Um, and RLA, our teachers really became masterful at this, um, using a variety of tools to help students to access and to learn synch, asynchronously through the use of pre-recording lessons and activities. This also provided kids with an, you know, essential break to, um, from the intensity of, of class online, um, and allowed them to do learning more at their own pace. Um, recommendation five, incredibly, um, important, and this will be the last, um, recommendation I focus on, minimizing stress and anxiety during transitions. At RLA, this has been a real focus this year as we want our students to feel a part of, um, their homeschools while they are apart from their homeschools. So RLA used recommendations in PowerPoints from Panel One to prepare parents and caregivers from remote, for remote learning this year. Um, and it was extremely helpful for parents and caregivers to see and read about the suggestions to set up a space to learn, for example. Um, RLA classrooms had predictable structures that reduce social, uh, student anxiety, morning meeting, class meetings, clubs, activities, um, structured to the lessons that teachers presented. So students really knew what to expect. And throughout the year, RLA had transition, um, a transition committee made up of parents, PTO members, Maria Litas, who's our Director of, um, Counseling and Clinical Services, the RLA Principals, myself and Chris Moynihan, who met on a regular basis to put into place transitional activities. One of these is guidance councils from homeschools, meeting with RLA grade-level students. One of these is guidance counselors from homeschools, meeting with RLA grade level students at the end of this year to prepare them to go back to homeschools and to listen to what their concerns are. And, you know, we have kindergartners, first, second, third, all the way through seventh grade, who all have concerns about next year. And they were very articulate with their guidance counselors. Our eighth grade transition meeting with the guidance, RLA principals and parent caregivers to review the timeline for eighth grade transition and answering questions is another example of how we, how we use these recommendations. So I thought that they proved really helpful and extremely useful. And again, I just want to thank this committee. It was wonderful to work with them.
Thank you so much, Meg. That is one of nine K eight principals. I won't bring the other eight to do the same thing. But please know that all of our principals could have come and really sort of shared their, their testimony for how useful the recommendations were. So, so thank you to panel one and both Kenan McKenzie and Lisa Gerd and I see are here. So maybe at the very end, it would be great to, if the panel chairs want to say anything, that would be great. Panel two, expert advisory panel two was support to address the whole child experience. Let's just name a couple of takeaways and next steps that they focused on. And certainly their main focus was classroom-based SEL, social emotional learning, emotional regulation, relationships, processing senses of loss as children were kind of going through this process. And making sure that we were as a district, understanding through universal screening as well as targeted individual interventions where the most important pieces were to lean into. Certainly they had recommendations around the out of school time and physical wellness and sort of what that hybrid experience could look like. I think everybody wishes we could have done more on that. But they had very, very good thoughts about also just sort of making the guidance staff stronger, hiring additional guidance staff, implementing much more clarity around identifying mental health problems and and communication structures with parents around child wellbeing. And they did a phenomenal job putting together a whole series of webinars. They came up with startup resources for parents. They got an early look at some of the survey results with Maria Litas, as Meg mentioned earlier, as our Director of Guidance and Clinical Services. So we got some early looks at the data. And really, you know, if, if any, if nothing else, they just had this laser focus on just the pressing, pressing need for mental health resources and, and really the emergency facing our students this year. So being able to have that conversation elevated and pushed all the way through different aspects was, was incredibly important. So if I can turn to Darby Nafir, who's our lead guidance at the high school. Maria unfortunately couldn't make it this evening, but Darby has agreed to kind of give us a sense from her perspective as to how this, how this worked.
Good evening, everyone. Darby Nafir here. I usually pronounce she hers. Coordinator of Guidance and Counseling at the high school, and I'm stepping in for Maria Litas. This evening, she's, I'm actually sharing her words related to panel two. Planning the start of the year seems an eternity ago. It's really amazing how the parents and community came together to support the critical work of schools, to not only educate the minds of our students, but to support their emotions, feelings and hearts. Panel two contributed to the heavy work of the schools by providing their expert knowledge in the areas of mental health, wellness, children's welfare and out of school time. The research and knowledge that has, that was presented aligned with the priorities of the school counseling and wellness teams. This information was shared with principals and senior leadership throughout the year to reinforce the continued prioritization of social emotional learning and social emotional wellness. We know that a child must have their basic needs met in order to be mentally able and available to learn. The panel organized their expert knowledge and offered this through presentations we could use in the areas of social emotional wellness, physical wellness, parent facilitation and engagement and community building. The first half of the year was particularly challenging for all. The panel was thoughtful about the needs of students, parents, educators and administrators. One of their early priorities was to help advocate for the reinstatement of the wellness coordinator and the important importance of social emotional wellness. At the time, it was the only department without a designated coordinator. With their recommendations, schools focused heavily on relationships and SEL skill building in the virtual classrooms. This critical work continued to hold priority at each change in the school year as we shifted from remote to hybrid to in-person and for the students at RLA. As we move forward, the district is continuing to look at how we can infuse SEL throughout the curriculum as well as dedicating specific time and opportunities to prioritize community building. For students, the panel provided recommendations on maximizing outdoor space, creative ways to increase physical wellness and incorporating movement throughout the day, prioritizing service learning and increasing strategies to help students with organization. Schools and grade levels use this information in different ways, recognizing the need to have physical movement to balance out screen time. As COVID restrictions began to decrease, they promoted the ability of school counselors and psychologists to go outside for socially distanced walks with students as a method for meeting in person. Recognizing administrators had so much on their plates, the panel organized to create weekly wellness tips to help parents that were sent out in PTO newsletters, principal communications and posted on Facebook and on the BHS weekly guidance update. The panel members were also explicit about prioritizing self-care for educators. In addition to the school-based self-care, Principals Incorporated, the district dedicated the morning session of its January Professional Development Day to educator self-care. For parents, they helped to create a school-specific charts listing common challenges or questions parents may have, have, or who parents, or parents that they could have contact with. They provided recommendations to increase video messaging and tutorials for parents around investigating remote learning platforms and how to help students and parents prepare for school building reopening. The panel also helped provide guidance on parent workshops. As a result, the district offered a virtual parent event in April for supporting the mental health of our K through 12 youth. The district will be using the recommendations of panel two around helping parents to help their children manage stress. Although we're beginning to see normalcy return, we must continue to help our parents with the longer term effects of the sustained stress so many felt continually for over the, this past year. As described by panel two, parents are the most important adults in their children's lives. We will continue to help guide parent-focused solutions to support children's mental health and stress management. Although the school year is coming to a close, the contributions of panel two will be taken and used as the backbone for some of the work that is being done to prepare for 2021, 2022 and beyond. In particular, their guidance on the Castle Frameworks, multi-tier systems of support, also known as MTSS, and resource mapping. The panel provided recommendations on data-driven decision-making that we will incorporate into our planning for the student universal screening survey next year and the training for educators and information sharing to parents. The district and school counseling team sincerely thank panel two and all of their contributions to supporting our students, parents and staff this year.
Thank you so much, Darby. As you can see, there are so many details. We probably could keep going, but we will hasten on to panel three, which is the Remote Learning Capacity Building Panel. Panel three was a little bit different. It really focused on the pedagogy of remote learning. So in addition to identifying best practices for technology-enabled pedagogy, panel three members also jumped in and ran some very successful webinars for PSP educators on the effective use of Zoom and some other remote learning tools. And I mean, on this one, coming into the pandemic, Brookline was in a very different place on education technology, I think, than we are now. Brookline was never necessarily known as an ed tech district. And we were never really a district with a lot of sort of enforced consistency across our classrooms. Teachers had tremendous autonomy, especially relative to some of our peer districts, which became very clear to educators and families throughout the pandemic. And so this panel really leaned in to try to think about kind of how to start with where we were and, and go forward, which was enormously important. So let me just sort of mention a few of their recommendations briefly, and then I'll turn it over to Michelle Herman, who worked with them really closely along with Scott Moore. One of their main recommendations was optimizing both synchronous and asynchronous teaching based on kind of a core set of things that all children needed to know. And this dovetailed really nicely with the Essential Curriculum Project that the schools have been working on. The second is to define educator competencies in remote learning. And this was, had two pieces. One is around the competencies for educators. And the other is what are the habits of learning and the portrait of a graduate, if you will, that our students will, will pick up over the course of their, their lifetime with us. And so I think we probably did a little bit more, more, more strong work on the, on the portrait of the graduate and the student focus. And, and there's still work to do on the educator competencies piece. They also had a lot of recommendations around providing technology tools and resources and, and a real professional learning community for staff. Worked very hard with Scott Moore, who's our Director of Education Technology. Anne Spencer, the co-chair, jumped in and started building websites and everything. And really just really, and a lot of support for what does a professional community look like around, around remote learning, particularly in education technology. And obviously the school committee added a lot of time to the contract for collaboration. And hopefully that was helpful. We heard, we heard that was pretty important as well, to be able to teach both in hybrid and, and remote environments. There were some other recommendations around monitoring the impact of these practices and better in continuing to leverage the expertise within our community. But let me turn it over to Michelle to give a sense of some of these things and the conversations that she was in with Scott and how these things are, are informing our thinking.
Thank you. And it's good to see some of you that I haven't seen in a couple of months. So the, the piece about panel three was that the pandemic created a reality that focused, that forced us as staff and students to use new techniques and tools to engage in effective learning. The members of panel three set out to support the district in implementing tools and pedagogical strategies to maintain strong instruction during an unprecedented time. The team met regularly with district leaders to determine how to support the work going on in the district. The ironic thing about panel three was that they had to support us through multiple transitions. So they supported us when we were all remote so that all of instruction was remote. And what were the appropriate tools and technologies to be using for that? As we moved into a hybrid stage so that we were meeting the needs of students, both in the classroom and who were at home. And then as we transitioned all the way back to students in person. They provided guidance on professional development, recommendations for continuing to use what we learned about instruction in a remote world as students return to in-person learning. Many of the members of the team were also engaging in remote and hybrid experiences through their own institutions, which provided opportunities to share experiences about what was and was not working. In addition, the members facilitated professional development sessions that Susan mentioned, and they were well attended by teachers, and we had the honor of having Dan Levy present a large Zoom session for our teachers. Panel three's biggest contribution though, which I think is so important to the work, is they're being championed for leveraging, for leveraging how we can continue to support the use of these new and effective practices as we move forward. In addition, they really pushed us, and I think this is one of the things that came out in the recommendations, to consider how to be planful for the future. Should we need to pivot into all remote again or just even hybrid? And I think the time that, that panel three members designated to the district was so appreciated. And as Susan said, one of the big things that we also were able to do was spend a lot of time reorganizing the professional materials for teachers that we keep online in the portal so that they were easily able to get at these tools and adapted materials for both remote and hybrid instruction. So we really appreciate the time that you spent with us and thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Michelle. Moving on to panel four, the idea of trying to summarize what panel four did in two and a half minutes is, is almost laughable. And it's, it's so complex, but I tried to think about it in terms of headlines. The first piece of this, especially around the summer, was around getting some of those, the big pieces in place, ventilation, PPE, distancing, just the big recommendations. Fall was really about doing those things. And then if winter, we sort of moved more into testing to, to look at the asymptomatic aspect, to see if we can make sure that all those measures were doing what we wanted them to do. And just as we were kind of hitting our stride on testing, we moved directly into vaccines, standing up six vaccine clinics this spring. And by we, I mean Tricia and her team of incredible nurses and, and staff. So I will not even try to summarize, but let me just say that panel four was swimming in charts and graphs. So if you ever need a chart or graph for any reason, just take it out of the panel for presentation and put it in your own presentation. It will look very, very impressive. So I'll pull out a couple of numbers. One is that apparently, and I didn't know this, we have something like a million square feet of school building space that we were working with at Mac Ellis and Charlie Simmons. And everyone tries to, tries to keep in good shape for us that we needed to work on ventilation for. We had something like, and these are Dave Geishock's numbers, 175,000 staff member days in buildings. And we had more than a half a million student days in buildings. And yet there were only 303 known cases among staff and students overall, only 70 of whom were present in the buildings while infectious. And three, four, I think the number was end up four, can't rule out cases likely or can't rule out cases of in-school transmission. So it's completely mind-boggling to think that we had nearly three quarters of a million days in buildings and we had four likely or can't rule out cases of in-school transmission. And it's just entirely a testament to all of this planning, all of the work our nurses did and all of the work that our teachers did on a daily basis to make these new behaviors and, and, and masks and distancing and sanitizing and all those different pieces a reality every single day with all of our young people, keeping them safe. I'm not going to go through all of the testing statistics, only to say that we had some 25,000 tests overall, if I, if that number is, is right. And we had something like, I bet, I should, I'm not going to give a number on the, on the vaccines because I don't know the final number, but our six clinics, we, we delivered many, many vaccines. And I think that was just, again, incredible testament to our educators and, and to the nurses who made that a priority for, for everyone and, and our families to, to really change their patterns and make sure that happened. So let me turn it over to Tricia, who's our head of health services to give us a flavor from her perspective. And then after Tricia, we'll just open it up to if any of the co-chairs want to say anything, that would be great, or any school committee members, Dr. Marini, obviously. So thank you, Tricia.
Thank you. So panel four, expert advisory panel four is composed of an amazing group of Brookline parents with expertise in public health, infectious disease, occupational health, public health policy, emergency medicine, diagnostics and operations, scientific research, critical care, healthcare law and other aspects of healthcare. Wow. These leaders in their respective fields have generously given of their time and expertise for the past year, helping Brookline make decisions on reopening our schools and keeping them open. Weekly Friday afternoon meetings were rich in discussion and thorough in exploring solutions. If you had to be somewhere on a Friday afternoon, this was a good place to be. Topics included the sharing and discussion of peer-reviewed COVID-19 literature and studies, such as those regarding risk of school-based transmission of COVID-19, analysis and discussion of DESI reopening guidance and continuing evaluation of updates, consultation with Dr. Joe Allen, sharing expertise and recommendations on improved ventilation in schools, recommended use of community benchmarks to inform health and safety guidelines, weekly review of community incidence benchmarks, in-depth discussion of diagnostic testing options for symptomatic individuals, further discussion and evaluation of pooled testing options for asymptomatic staff and students, review and discussion of PSP cases, close contacts and quarantine experience, evaluation of Massachusetts DPH and DESI guidelines regarding in-school close contact definition and quarantine, review and recommendations on distancing, cleaning, cohorting, PPE, collaboration with PTO to obtain high-quality masks for staff, discussion of equity and anxiety and hesitancy issues around return to full in-person instruction. This incomplete list sheds some light on the breadth of topics discussed and recommendations made by panel four. It does not, however, come close to indicating the countless hours spent in pursuit of our common goal of a in pursuit of our common goal of a safe school experience for our students and staff. Early and frequent discussions of various testing options for Brookline with strong advocacy with both the town and school administrators helped Brookline choose testing options, starting with symptomatic testing for Brookline residents and then asymptomatic testing for staff and students. This advocacy working team met frequently with school committee members, school nurses, others to troubleshoot, fine-tune, discuss, evaluate and analyze. Others on panel four analyzed the weekly COVID-19 case data and created detailed weekly graphs. Panel four members toured schools, measured spaces and assisted in evaluating air quality, assessed space issues and assisted assessed space issues and answered specific questions for specific spaces and disciplines and educators and principals. They held question-and-answer Zoom meetings with staff and parents at individual schools. As you might imagine, these experts in their medical fields were extraordinarily busy in their own careers during this pandemic. That they willingly gave so much time, energy, thoughtful consideration and guidance to our schools is remarkable. In a time of a pandemic when fear, anxiety and uncertainty were prominent and things were changing rapidly, a group of true experts came together to meet, discuss, review and advise in a collaborative, respectful process. You, panel four, were a true gift to the public schools of Brookline. I have said this many times, panel four represents the very best of what Brookline can be. On behalf of the public schools of Brookline, I offer you our deep and sincere gratitude for your dedication and tireless work.
Thank you so much, Tricia. And Tricia, you and Nat Gellis are the unsung heroes of this entire year for so many reasons. So hopefully, we will have many opportunities to to thank you two as well for just the incredible leadership that you provided to all of us. All right, let me turn it back to Suzanne. I've already gone on too long. We could have gone on twice as long, but we didn't. So you're welcome. We do have some of our co-chairs here, Canaan, Lisa, Janet and Dave, maybe a couple others. And again, I just want to particularly shout out and thank my partners in crime, Andy and Mariah. I only I made it to about 95% of the meetings. I didn't make it to all of them, but but both Mariah and Andy did an amazing job being liaisons with their with their work and and helping their panels along. So let me give it back to you, Suzanne.
Thank you so much, Susan, and thank you so much to all of our panelists, for sure. We, you know, there's the old saying, if you want something done, you give it to a busy person. And I think that's absolutely true for all of our panelists. They were extremely busy in profession in their own profession, and yet they gave so much of their time. Thank you so, so much. And I see Mariah, just the second Mariah, and I just want to be sure to say thank you to Susan. Susan and Sharon had this idea at the beginning, and they made it work, and they put in a lot of time and thought into that, including looking at all the applications for the panel members. So thank you so much for that, Susan. And to Sharon, I'm sure she's not watching, but we can give the word to her. And thank you to Mariah and Andy for stepping in where we needed some some support and help. So thank you so much. We are a little bit over time. I'll, Mariah, I'll let you say something. We'll try not to, and Helen wants to say, lots of people are going to say something. So we'll give it 10 minutes and then I'm going to call it because we have other other panelists and members who are waiting for their turn. And so we we want to keep as close to our schedule as we can. So Mariah and then Helen.
Thanks. I just wanted to echo the thanks to Susan in particular for like from from beginning to end being the, as you said, I don't, I think 95% might be an underestimate of the number of meetings you attended, like 99.9% of them. And what you just said, Suzanne, about if you want to have something done, give it to a busy person. Susan already had so much on her plate when she took this on. So what a tremendous gift to the district for you to have shepherded this whole thing through. And not just what happened with the panels, but the side conversations around testing and everything else. And I also wanted to thank in particular the staff members who were the liaisons to the panels because of how tremendous they are incredibly overburdened already with their time, but really amplifying those messages and serving as the, as I said, the liaison back to the educator community and the administrator community was so valuable to make all of these things work. And I'm just really grateful. So thank you all.
Helen, thank you, Mariah.
I echo your words, Mariah, so I won't repeat them. And about Susan, obviously, but I'd also like to, I think, to thank panel four for informing and the work that Charlie Simmons and Matt Gillis did to open up our schools. I think, you know, without that information and the ability to work and Joe Allen's volunteering to come into the schools and help out an extremely busy person throughout the year. I think without those pieces, we would not have felt the confidence of opening up the schools. And I think it's it was, Matt, can't thank you enough. Same for Charlie. And and thank you, Joe Allen, for assisting them and the panel four for making it happen.
Matt and then Jennifer.
Yeah, panel four, in a word, was invaluable for us to reopen. No other way to really describe having some world-class folks in their field help you out. And I'd like to thank Ed Clancy and Karen King, two people in operations that with me and with the other volunteers gave up nights and weekends in the summer gratis to make sure the schools would get open. So I think I just wanted to recognize them. I know the people that that know them know how hard they work, I know how helpful they are, but not not everybody that's watching knows. But there are there are two of the people that helped everything happen in the school system happen.
Thank you, Matt. Jennifer.
So many wonderful things have already been said, and I don't want to go ahead and repeat everyone's words. But I do want to thank all of the people that have been mentioned this evening for all of the time and energy, countless meetings. It's been a really long road, but I think that this amazing group of people are what make Brookline an amazing place to live, to work and to send your kids to school. And we were able to open our schools and keep keep things going. It was really wonderful. I also want to thank panels one, two and three for coming to our March 16th curriculum subcommittee meeting and reporting out on all of the work that they've done, which is recorded. So if you want lots and lots of details and all of the attachments are there on our website. But just a ton of work has been done, and it's just an amazing group. Our staff members and our community members, our parents, all coming together. It's just was it's, I'm so glad that we're having this conversation to take the time to thank everybody because it was really important work and because it's what it's what was best for our kids. And that's what it always comes down to. So our children and we thank you all. Thanks.
I just saw Anne Spencer.
Hey there. I just wanted to thank everyone here. I don't want to pile on the thanks, but I'm in awe of the experience that I had, and I feel very honored to work with all of the panel members and the administration members that I did. And I think it's amazing what Brookline did. I just hope that this is the beginning of something new that we continue to try with the community, working with the administration in a way that makes sense. I learned so much about our school system this year, the challenges, the victories, everything. And we managed to keep our collective heads together because of panel four, so thank you for that. But I'm just going to double down. I hope this is just the beginning. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're going to call and end. It's hard to, it's hard to end, but again, a big thank you to everyone who participated. And you know, it it did take a whole, a whole town to make this work, just a whole village, but more than that. So thank you all so very much. And as Anne said, let's hope that we continue to have these collaborations. Jim, did you want to say something or you're all set?
The only thing I would say is if this were the beginning and you listened to all of what has happened, but it was placed in the future in terms of this is what we expect to do, you would say, no way you can do that. That doesn't make any sense at all. Who in this in this world thinks you're going to be able to do all of that? Let's scale that back. And yet, looking at the rearview mirror, it is absolutely daunting. And it is amazing how much came together, what was actually accomplished. So I mean, really, you take stock of that and you say, you really do say, wow. So really, it's really impressive. Thank you.
I I do want to say that we we do have an additional recognition of all our building custodial staff. And we certainly want to give them a shout out for the many extra hours, for all that PPE distribution, for all the hard work and and just, we didn't even know what we were doing at the beginning, but they, we thought of something and they would just go and do it, you know. So I
Not just in the schools, they cleaned the police station and the fire stations and disinfected. You know, when the town was shut down, so public safety was up and running and DPW and emergency operations. Our custodians, you know, thank you, Suzanne, for not not missing that opportunity.
Oh, no, yeah, no, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We, you know, everybody had a part to play and everybody stepped up and gave more than 150%. And it's what made it work. And that's when we heard Claire's little video, they were so happy to be back in school. It's because everybody worked so hard to get the kids back into the buildings. And it just took all panels, all all hands on deck to make that happen. So thank you to our custodial staff as well, certainly. Okay, people are welcome to stay as long as they want. However, you're also welcome to go and enjoy your evening, unless you're a school committee member, and then you get to hang around with me for a while longer. So there you go.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for sure. Jim, are you going to introduce the possible vote for Deputy Superintendent for Administration and Finance?
Sure, certainly. In your packet, you have a resume and a letter for the recommendation of the Deputy Superintendent for Administration Finance. And as you know, under the Ed Reform Act, the this appointment is the school committee's appointment. It's it's a direct appointment by the school committee, and the reason for that is the the school committee is responsible for the hiring of a superintendent and for the budget. And if the school committee is being held responsible for the budget, which which they are, both by the public and legally, then they are also being given the authority to hire the person who oversees the budget, the deputy for financing administration. Sam Rippon is being brought forward. Sam was one of a number of people who applied for this position. And there was a committee, a significant committee, about 11 people serving the committee, made up across the district. The school committee member, Mariah, was on the committee. Central senior staff were on it, principals were on it, members of the town administration were on it. And let me see. And the finance committee, the 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 public schools finance department members were on it, so they could really inform the discussion as well. After interviewing the five candidates, we had two finalists, and those two finalists visited the schools and an opportunity to meet with staff beyond the interview committee. And Sam demonstrated his his knowledge quite well, his understanding of schools. Sam has a deep knowledge of school finance. He has an MBA. And he's a certified public accountant. And he also enrolled at Boston College Graduate School, and he has an advanced degree, certificate of advanced study in school leadership. He wanted to do that so that he would have a deeper understanding of what school budgets are all about, and that is teaching and learning. And he wanted to have a deeper understanding of that. Sam is, I had the opportunity to work with Sam in another district, and his skills, he probably knows more about school finance and budget than certainly anybody I know. But he is, he he pays attention to detail, but he's a big thinker. He thinks about budgets in terms of how does a school budget support the goals, the mission and the values of the school district? And that that's what drives him to try to understand that so that he can make the budget work for its intended purpose, not the other way around, make the school. He doesn't want to make the school department work for the budget. He wants to make the budget work for the schools and for the students. So that's a kind of thinking that that Sam does. This is an appointment by the school committee and your requires your vote. And that's all, that's clearly how we're presenting it. You'll notice that Joe's name is on the recommendation letter as well as mine. Joe conducted the search and and is bringing forward the recommendation really out of the search committee. And we're bringing it forward to the to the committee at large. I don't know if anyone, but he wants to make comment or ask questions. That's very appropriate. And I think Sam's in the background here somewhere. They don't see him.
He's not on yet. He's an attendee. We're going to bring him on after the vote.
Okay.
So people can meet him. So do I have a motion? Mariah?
Yes. Do I get to do that? Is that okay?
Sure, because you're
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So I move for the appointment of Sam Rippon as the Deputy Superintendent for Administration and Finance.
And I get to add these words on the condition, conditioned upon the successful negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract of employment approved by both parties and signed by the Deputy Superintendent for Administration Finance and the Chair of the Brookline School Committee. Do I have a second to that motion? Thank you, Stephen. Do I have any comments, questions, thoughts before we vote? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Jennifer?
Suzanne, can I make one quick comment?
Oh, sure, Mariah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know that. I I think that just a couple of members of the school committee got to interview Sam beforehand. Not everyone, certainly. But I just wanted to say that as a member of the search committee, I was deeply impressed by Sam's knowledge and his a deep sort of sense of reliability. And I thought this will be someone who will have a really wonderful experience with in terms of being able to bring us through to the next period as we as we have one deputy superintendent leaving and we have a new superintendent arriving and a new deputy superintendent for teaching and learning, new deputy superintendent for administration and finance. And so he's really, his experience is really outstanding. And I was very grateful that we got such a a strong candidate to to apply for this position.
And Suzanne There's one piece that I I should have included. Mariah reminded me that as part of the process, Sam met with Dr. Guillory. And so they had an extended conversation. Then I circled back to Dr. Guillory. And and he was supportive as well. So I just, then he, everything we're doing is Dr. Guillory is is right there with us.
Thank you. That's important. Okay, we'll take the vote. Jennifer?
With those wonderful words of encouragement, I vote yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And we don't have Dimitri tonight, do we? Okay. And I vote yes as well. So, Robert, if you could just bring Sam on, we can at least say hello, say hi to us.
Suzanne, while he's doing that, can I say something briefly?
Sure, Susan.
I've talked enough tonight, but I just want to say that I had the pleasure of interviewing the candidates along with some of our principals. And it was a very, very positive experience that our principals had as well during the interview. So thank you to Mr. Rippon.
Mr. Rippon, welcome, welcome. We voted yes, you're on. Well, once we figure it all out.
Well, well, thank you, Suzanne, and, and I'm both, uh, humbled and honored, uh, by the kind words. And, uh, I, I, I look forward, uh, to the opportunity to work with you all. Those I've met and those, uh, yet to meet. And, uh, I've just had a wonderful experience, uh, both with the committee, uh, initially via Zoom and onsite. It, just the excitement that I have and the positive energy that I felt. Uh, just, uh, I, I couldn't help but feed on that positive energy and, uh, look, uh, I look so forward to, uh, working with such a great team to do great things for the public schools of Brooklyn.
Well, thank you very much, Sam. I appreciate that you carved some time out of your busy schedule to come to say hello to us. I know we'll have lots of time in the near future, very near future to do this. But I thought it would be nice for you to see us and for us to see you. So thank you for doing that. And, uh, we'll, we'll work on that contract and see if we can't get you on board sooner rather than later. So.
Forward to it. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you're also welcome to go and enjoy your evening. So we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we are now going to, and I know we have several people on for this, a presentation, uh, maybe possible vote on Pierce Educational Plan and space summary. So, uh, Helen, I see your name.
Yes, you know what?
I see Jay, Wesley, Leslie's here and Jamie's here. Yeah, go right ahead.
So I guess, uh, what I'd like to do is sort of just frame why we're here today. Um, in terms of, uh, voting, the, the school committee needs to vote for the MSBA, the education plan uh, and the space summary. In order for us to move forward with the MSBA, we certainly want to do all those pieces. We have most of the team that's working together here, along with Principal Ryan and, um, Assistant Principal Jamie Yada, Yadoff, who will soon be the, uh, interim principal at the school. Uh, and, uh, Ms., uh, Ryan Miller will be the new deputy superintendent. All of whom will stay on the, the project, uh, because they have roles there. Um, I'll introduce the rest of the people here. And then, uh, probably that, I think it's Jen who's going to, uh, be putting up the agenda, correct? And, and, or how are we doing this? Well, let me introduce the people here. So we have Jen Carlson and Linda Stapleton from Leftfield, our owner's project manager. We have the architectural firm of Miller, Dyer Spears. Uh, Will Spears, who's the principal, and Margaret Clark, uh, who's also, uh, principal at the, uh, firm. We have David Stephen here, who's our educational consultant. And who am I missing? And obviously Matt Gilchrist, who's been involved with this from the beginning. I think that's, uh, all the people we have here today. Um, you've all gotten the education plan and the space summary. And I think the idea is to have questions about that, uh, though I think that, uh, first, we may get some, uh, presentation from the architects. Is that correct? Or how do you want to run it? Stop talking and let you talk now.
Uh, can everyone hear me? My Zoom is a little bit glitchy, um, but having connection problems all day, so I apologize. Um, so we are looking today to, um, to field any questions that you all may have had on the Pierce Educational Plan, uh, that was distributed. Uh, and then hopefully, if, um, hopefully we, we can get a possible vote, uh, to approve the educational plan and the space summary. Um, and, uh, Margaret Clark will, will help take us through the space summary to understand, uh, how that's laid out. Um, and then after, after that, we have, um, some options that, um, on, on the, um, some options for construction, um, that, that MDS, uh, will also present, just so that everyone kind of understands the, um, the, the options that are out there and that are being submitted as part of the preliminary design program, um, to the MSBA tomorrow. Earlier today, the school building committee, uh, voted to approve the submission to the MSBA tomorrow, uh, pending this vote on the, um, on the educational plan and space summary. Um, and with that, I'm not sure if Margaret, do you want to pop up the space summary and, and we can field questions on this?
Everybody has this also in their packets. In case it's difficult to see.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself while I was sharing my screen. Try that again. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Not well.
Well, okay, I can, uh, try to zoom in a little bit more here. So, the, um, is that a little bit better? That close?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, um, the space summary is, is, uh, broken up into columns of the, uh, which, what the space type is, what the existing conditions are, which we, um, added up between the two buildings, the historic building and the nineteen seventies building. It's, uh, four pages long in these columns of what the actual existing spaces are that we went over, um, in detail with, with Jamie Yadoff to, to make sure we had the assignments correct about how the space is being used today. On the far end, uh, to the right, there is the MSBA guidelines and what they think that you should have. Essentially, minimum requirements for, uh, an appropriate space for K, KT eight program. And they have this column between the two, which is the difference between what you're proposing and what the MSBA has as their guidelines. Um, and then in the middle here is, is the proposed. It only shows as new, but it would be distributed as either existing or new, depending on whether it was an addition renovation or a new building. The categories that they have are core academic spaces, all your classroom, science rooms, and some of your specialized programming that are just for, for, for the general education population. Then they have special education rooms and all, um, we worked, we worked with the team to determine what all those were, were. And we compared these, this space summary also to the Driscoll and the Ridley programs so that everybody understood what was equal and what was not equal about the various programs. Art and music, um, the vocation and technology, that is, um, your, uh, Makerspace and, um, the more engineering, I mean, the more computerized dire version of that, which, which we're calling the Fab Lab, which you have, um, at those other two schools. The Health and Physical Education Program, Media Center, Dining and Food Service, down to Administration, and even custodial space. So, um, and then it summarizes at the bottom, the comparison of, uh, how much is, you know, we have a growth calculation of what the total buildings are now, and then projected as to what they would be in the future. So that's the, the space summary. Any questions about that?
I was going to explain that the, um, meant to say this earlier. The space summary, uh, is based off of the educational plan. So that the spaces, um, that will be, you know, that are proposed for the new school or, you know, new as in, um, you know, not the current, uh, situation. These spaces reflect exactly what is required by the educational plan and, um, and will meet the school's needs. So, so that is how these two, um, these two documents are tied together. The, um, there are a bunch of visioning, uh, educational visioning workshops with, um, Leslie and Jamie and Helen and Matt Gillis and, um, a host of other, um, other teachers and staff and parents, um, in the process that, um, that helped develop, uh, helped develop goals and priorities for the project. And those were taken, um, and took a narrower focus on that and, and turned that into the educational plan, um, that was written by the schools. And that's when we met with Margaret's team to, um, to develop this space summary in detail. If any of the rest of the team want to add any color to that, um, please do.
Are there any questions from any of the school committee members? I know it's a lot of, a lot to read, uh, what, what you got and, uh, you know, it's, it can be kind of confusing, so.
Yeah, Mariah.
Just a clarification, are we supposed to ask questions about the document itself or just the spreadsheet?
Either or.
Well, is the document going to be presented to or not?
Say it again.
Is any sort of summary of the document to be presented to or not?
I think it was more just for people to read it and then make comments, so.
Okay, so can I ask one, this is one comment about, um, the security section that was the very end of the document. Um, and, uh, as part of the security discussion, it talked about, um, safe access, sort of safe routes to schools considerations, I'll say, um, allowing children and their families to safely, um, go to and from school. And I'm very much paraphrasing, but all of the sort of considerations around, um, transportation and, um, and biking and walking and all of those sorts of things. And so my question is, um, at what point does, um, or, or will there be a study of that and look at like the traffic calming measures, including consideration of like rerouting of traffic or what could be done about particularly school street, um, and the access to the playground, both before and after school, as well as during the school day? And if that's already been considered, I'm not sure, but where that's at.
Uh, Margaret or Will, do you want to speak to, uh, when, it, there, there are some, some, uh, document in the, uh, oh, Margaret, Ellen, Margaret.
Um, well, I'll say is that, that we do intend to address that as part of each option. That currently the, the crossing, we know is, is not very effective in its current condition with the walkway up over the bridge, which is inaccessible and very few people seem to actually, actually use. Um, and in, in this project, the entire site and building would have to be made accessible. So i- if you were to keep some sort of a bridge, you'd actually have to have like an elevator up and down on either side. So we're going to look at options for traffic coming and making, um, making it safer at grade. Seems to be the direction that, uh, the team is leaning towards. Uh, but it will definitely be addressed with each option.
And will you be doing any sort of a study, um, I, either through this project or in concert with the Transportation Department, that them funding it of closing or, or some other sort of rerouting of school street altogether? So is that within scope?
We've done a traffic study to understand the impacts of what the projected, um, uh, population would have on the site. So we have that part as a basis and it's in, it's in this, the PDP that's being submitted. The impacts of changing the traffic pattern, um, have not been, yeah, reviewed as yet. I'm not sure if that's specifically in the traffic consultant's scope at this time, but, um, if necessary, we certainly can, um, work with that.
But the traffic consultant hasn't done their part yet then? Sorry to just.
They have done their understanding of the existing condition and, um, you know, they, they will suggest things like, um, a light, like a crossing light at, uh, where, where you connect to the park. A pedestrian flashing light, that kind of thing. Um, so they've made some preliminary recommendations for things like that, but not in terms of rerouting traffic. Okay.
And we had, we had some preliminary discussions about, um, both making the street narrower to improve pedestrian and bicycle lanes. So that's an exciting, interesting, um, aspect of the design we want to pursue. There's some preliminary discussion about possibly closing the street. I think there's going to be a lot of pushback from the, uh, from the Department of Transportation on that, but, um, you know, still, everything's on the table. And we're working with, uh, Sasaki Associates on landscape design and the, and the street design. And that's going to be, uh, the whole approach to the whole civic. Uh, importance of the site is, is foremost on our mind.
And going forward into, um, so once we do submit this preliminary design program, we will be, uh, exploring the options, um, that Margaret will show us later, uh, in further detail. And that's, um, when we're also going to be meeting with Safe Routes to School and the Transportation Department and having more of these, um, more in-depth conversations, um, once, while we're trying to figure out what works on site and how that relates to the streetscape. Uh, so we will be involving those groups in the town, um, hopefully in the coming few months.
Thanks. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Really about figuring out what the problem is and defining all the parameters. And it's really starting now that we start to think about how all those things come together. So, so even the so-called options that we're going to, that Margaret's going to show you, they're really about just analyzing the problem in terms of a very preliminary look at what might fit on the site based on the program that we've developed with you. So we, we put all those spaces together. We have a general idea of the gross square footage, played around a little bit and see how it, how it fits and what the implications are on the neighborhood and on the site.
Thanks. I, I just want to say that, you know, we just got over this other presentation talking about, among other things, um, Panel Two, Discussion of Whole Child and, um, Family Supports and Parent Engagement. And, um, having whatever we can do to make this school have the most flexible options in terms of being able to create a site that, um, uh, allows for the most options for what's going to go on during the educational day, but also enabling that full access, as you know, to the site and, um, safe access in the beginning of the day. Well, you know, low concern for parents about, you know, being able to have their kids walk to school. I just think it's so critical. As a current, um, Pierce parent who doesn't have to traverse that street, but thinks about it a lot. And I just would be very grateful as we move forward to make sure that that's on everyone's mind, what to do about that street. Because, I mean, um, today, if you were to say, oh, let's put a major street through the middle, like separating the school playground from the site of the school itself, clearly that would be a non-starter. And yet, you know, we have this, I won't say it's once in a lifetime opportunity, but it's once in a, what, fifty-year opportunity to, to do something better. And so let's not like underestimate how like, how important this moment in time is to do much better for generations of kids who are going to go to school here, um, and, and, and play on the site, um, both before, during, and after school. So, thank you.
Somebody else had a question. I thought.
Not seeing it now.
So, um, do you want to show the, um, does that, the, um, the designs and concepts that you've thought about so far for, uh, where structures could be?
Sure. They're basically, um, sort of testing how much volume will fit on, uh, the site with each of the options. So I'll just. Okay. Can see that?
Yeah.
So, um, this first image is just, um, simplified version of your site. The, this is the nineteen seventies building, Harvard Street and School Street here, with the historic building, um, uphill near the town parking lots here. And the Pierce Playground is also part of the project, what we're, what we're looking at as potential sites. As the MSBA asks us to look at, um, to look at all options, um, for citing a, a new building. Just for reference, um, relative to that, oh, the, the north, north is left on these, on all these drawings. For reference, this, uh, the building, the portion of the building to the north, um, is referred to as Unit A. The portion to the south is Unit B. And the portion, the smaller portion that extends out toward the historic building is, is Unit C. And we just, uh, labeled the historic building H, but that'll give you a reference in the, these diagrams. Let me zoom in a little further here. So, um, the MSBA also asks us to, um, sorry, these things are popping up. To look at, from, uh, being able to rent property in town all the way to building new buildings. So, um, the first ones that, that apply to, um, our diagramming is basically the, they ask for a code upgrade only, which is just a, um, if you were only going to address code issues for the building and site, what would you do? And that's, a lot of it's addressing ADA and fire alarm and that kind of level of things. So that's option R, option R, um, sorry. So that's option R, option, sorry, this should be R1. Option R1 is renovation only. Renovation only is, is now you take that same building and you move walls around as necessary and to, to meet your program. But again, just keep the building as, the volume as is. Neither of those first two options works for this project because the, the existing net square footage that's available for programming, once you get rid of some of the little lofts that, that you can't make accessible is only 82,244 square feet, whereas the projected space summary is 106,300 net square feet. So it's just too small in its existing configuration to accommodate the proposed program. So the first option, which is capable of fulfilling the space summaries, option one, where basically we take down, so now, now in this diagram, the north is up. You take, you keep Unit A and Unit B and take down the little Unit C that was in between the 70s building and the historic building and build through the middle of it, a larger volume. And it's not necessarily this volume, but approximately this is just this size of the amount of space with around those two units of the, of the existing structure. This is just our op, the first option, which keeps the most of the existing building, but would meet your program. Option two, it, we're going to look at keeping just Unit A, which is where the, the library space is now, that, that's the two-story space that's currently has all the open classrooms around it. And it's our understanding that that's a well-loved part of the school, at least to a certain part of the population. So if we now take down Unit B, we have more space to build a volume for the rest, in, in a better configuration, closer to what you want in the relationships of the pieces of the program. So you can see that here in blue. Some, again, the, the form of it will change in the multiple options that we'll look at for option two, but gives you a sense of how much volume we would consider. And then option three is a new building. Again, this is basically just saying, take down A, B and C. The historic building H has to remain because of its historic registrations. It physically has to stay on the site. So we will consider many options three, which would put a new building on the site, on the existing site. And then option four is if we take down everything on the existing side of the site. Now, now in this diagram here, the north is to your, to your right. And now the park is beyond, that we could put a new building on the park site and swap the land and put the park on the existing site. It has a lot of pros and cons that have been discussed, but that's the summary of the level of options that we're going to be looking at moving forward on those two sites.
Are there any questions from the committee or from staff or anybody else?
Helen, maybe, maybe Margaret or someone could just kind of talk about. I know we've got these options, but they're just, they're just that, right? Talk about, a little about, about the process of input from the community and.
Yeah, I can actually talk a little bit to it. Today at the building committee, we voted to have a working group work with the architects and the owner's project manager, et cetera, including staff from the school, myself, Andy Lou, and a couple other members, not to have a quorum of the committee, but just a, a working group that will report back to the school building committee within a month or so of where we're going and continue that sort of process till, do you want to put up the, Jen, the what's it called, the schedule? I think that might be helpful.
One second, wait, give me a second.
Originally, there was talk about having a September 8th submission of the preferred design and that everybody felt was way too soon because there wouldn't be any chance for public input or, or even a, a school committee input, whatever input, a staff input. So that's been moved back to the end of October and we are, we would be working, you know, together, there would be some community meetings, probably not during the summer because it's not a very good time to do that, but at the beginning of the school year to present what's, where we're at, get input from the community at that point. I'm trying to think what else. Anybody can help me, you can.
Just, just to whittle down the options.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly. Well done.
What I understood from the building committee meeting was that like October 28th is sort of when we'd want a, a selection of one preferred option from among the ones that we were just shown. Right? It's not exactly a design submission, that there's a schematic design that goes to MSBA probably next May. And then that would lead to a dead exclusion vote in September of 22. That seemed to be.
Well, September or November, we're not exactly sure.
And what, what is the possible topic of our vote tonight on this?
The, say that one more time.
The possible topic of our vote tonight.
There's two pieces to our vote. One is to vote the education plan, the written document. And to, second is to vote the space plan that you just saw before. You have access, you have both of them in your.
The spreadsheet, the space summary. Not these options. The options are a separate thing that was just to inform you of where it's moving forward.
Does that make sense?
All right, it's to approve or not to approve or to select from among options?
No, no, we're not doing anything with options at all. The MSBA requires them to do these sort of massing options so that the, the universe of massing options are there. And then this summer, we will be working through some of that, both in the larger group and in the small working group to get to a preferred design option.
We whittle it, we whittle it down to three options. That's, that'll be the goal for the, the end of the PSR. Before we get to three options, we might go through 10 options. But the process over the next few months is to get to three options, which could be a, probably be a combination of addition renovation, all new and something else, some, some other hybrid.
So Stephen, tonight, we're not, we're voting on two things. One is the the ed plan and the other is the, where do we go, the spreadsheet for the spacing.
Sorry, what does it mean to say that we're voting on the education plan?
That we approve the plan as, as it is written.
Thank you.
That is the plan, the plan determines what the space is. So if you need classes for pre-K, for instance, that's part of the plan. If you need classes for science, how many classes? I mean, you know, so you talk about what your program is, and from that you determine the number of spaces you need.
Plan was the 65-page document that was in our folder tonight.
Yes, yes. It was actually, you got it last week, Friday, I think it was.
I see.
We, we sent it out then as a link and because I knew it was a lot for people to take in and, and read.
That's right, that's Friday, but the Monday before, sorry.
Monday, sorry. It was last, a week ago, Monday.
So a lot, if I'm thinking this right, a lot of the, the plan for Pierce, although it's unique to Pierce, also was based on the Driscoll plan and the Ridley plan.
Correct.
So just to let Stephen know, it's not like it came out of thin air. We kind of have these models that we work from, these plans. And then you tweak it and make it unique for Pierce. Pierce has some unique things. Certainly their open library that's open to so many floors and many classrooms. So that, that's some of what might be unique, but things like maker spaces is in all our new plans. Driscoll's plan, Ridley's plan. We said, yeah, we like it as a district, we'll put it in the Pierce plan. As part of the ed plan piece of it.
For example, the number of ELL classrooms might be specific to Pierce. In this case, I think three.
And you'll, and you'll notice, at least I noticed on the, on the space spreadsheet, that, you know, there was hardly any small offices when this was built 50 years ago for ELS and for OT and PT and speech. And so those are all part of our educational program. So then we need to find spaces for that in the new space plan that we're going to approve. Does that make sense, Stephen? Are you with us?
Suzanne, may I take a stab at summarizing it?
Sure, go ahead, Matt.
So the educational plan is the text version of all of our programs. And you can see the details in each one, pre-K, kindergarten, science. And it's built around the, the enrollments and the number of class sections we're going to have. So the, the comparison with the Driscoll schools, our four-section schools should be fairly equitable. Just as the fourth grade should be equitable in all places. So as we evolve with building schools this century, where we're bringing the programs into more into alignment with, you know, with all the newer buildings, which is why we reviewed the last two. And then the space summary is kind of the spreadsheet and by the numbers of the spaces that are going to be designed by the architects and then constructed and ultimately be in the school. And so in order for the process to proceed, and MSBA has a very prescriptive process, we have to vote to submit these things to them. And they want to know that, that the school committee is behind the plan that they're, that they're, that we're submitting in the application.
Thanks, Mariah.
Thanks. I have two questions. The first is the new timeline that was just shown has, I think it was sort of September vote, a September 2022 vote, and you said possibly it would be November 22. And my question is, based on that, when would construction be estimated to start? And when would occupy, when would the building, the new building be occupied based on those dates? Roughly, understanding this is an art, not a science, and you don't know which massing model you're going with, et cetera, et cetera. But just to give Pierce families who are curious and sort of rough idea of what we're talking about.
Pushing, pushing this schedule out is going to bring us to a mid-year move of 2026. Depending, that's the very earliest. It's more likely to be a fall of 2026 school opening.
And when would construction begin?
Construction would begin in the fall to spring, fall of 2023 to spring of 2024.
Okay.
I'm in that timeframe.
Okay. And then, thank you. And then my second question is whether our two fearless building leaders who are here tonight could just comment on their sense of the educational plan and whether they feel it meets the needs of Pierce going forward.
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot, but putting you on the spot.
Well, I mean, I think one of the things doing the building plan really caused us to do was to think about our programming and thinking about how that really dovetails with enrollment. And so what I really feel good about with the plan was that it was a really nice collaboration between district, district leaders, curriculum coordinators, the administrative team. And I think that we came up with a, a plan that will make sense for our school. I mean, we thought a lot about how we currently use spaces and ways those spaces could be improved. And I think that those additions are in the plan. And Jamie, I don't know if you have any thoughts on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was a fantastic, fantastic exercise for me in imagining what a school with spaces designed for their use might look like. Mariah, you know, as well as anybody, that Pierce is sort of a very creative, creatively used space. And we have a lot of people sharing a lot of spaces that weren't actually intended for that purpose. And so when the people supporting us through this kept saying, but what would it look like if you could make it look like you really wanted it to look like? What, what should you be doing with that space? Those kinds of questions were really, gave us a lot of hope and excitement about the building project itself and about what a Pierce designed for Pierce could look like. I feel really good about the final product. It certainly has my full support. I think we've included everything in there that we really do need.
I think one other thing I'll add is that for a really long time, Pierce has been making do with the space that we have. And so, you know, Jamie, who really is, you know, the, the kind of chief architect of the schedule, she'll say, okay, we can do this, but we need to trade off this. And we say, okay, well, what, what makes sense and what's going to be the most impactful for children in a positive way? And so this plan really caused us to think about, what if you don't need to make trade-offs? What is the best thing in terms of space and what works well for students? And again, I think the plan really outlines that.
One of the things we should probably be aware of is that in, in this plan, we very clearly delineate that, that the need, MSBA approved us for three, basically 700 and, help me, how many students?
Seven 25 before beep.
Thank you. And that would come out to a three and a half section school. And we made the case in the education plan that it, there's a need for a four-section school not to be going back and forth with grades and, and, and population and that. Anyway, so that, that's one thing that people should be aware of here, that we may get some pushback from them, we may not. I, hopefully we made a good enough case. Andy.
We did a side, side note to Mariah's question about the, the timeline for construction and occupancy. The working assumption seems to be that that fourth option of building on the current Pierce Park would probably involve a two-year delay relative to the other options, while the Article 97 land swap gets, gets fought out.
As a conservative amount of additional time for, for that process to take.
I mean, it could be infinite if the land swap doesn't work out or if the neighbors object.
Or it could be more, more smooth if we're, if you're lucky.
But again, tonight, we don't have to vote on any of that. So Helen, are you ready to make a motion?
I am, but I think I will defer to Jen to tell us exactly what the motion needs to say.
Okay.
All right. Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong. I have, the school committee would vote to approve the, the educational plan, the Pierce School Educational Plan and the education, the space summary.
Yes, and the two are tied together. The education, the space summary is developed from the educational plan. And that's what we're, we're asking for approval on.
So you're having us vote on both of them together?
Yes.
Okay. And do I have a, could we take, yeah, could we take down the the shared screen for a minute, if you don't mind, so I can see what people are thinking.
Sorry, I forgot that was up.
So Helen, I think you actually moved the motion.
I did.
Okay. And do I have a second to that? Andy, thank you, Andy. Okay. Other comments, questions before we take a vote? I guess I would just ask one thing. If, if we reread it, there are some thoughts about something else. Is, is it too late to submit any thoughts or what, how does that work? Is it in stone, your ed plan's in stone or?
There's a, MSBA has a review period after they look at it and they'll have comments. So after we get their comments back, there'll be a period of time where, based on their comments and any other additional comments to come in, we, we have an opportunity to present anything new.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
So if anybody has any comments, maybe forward them to, to me or Andy. And then we can make sure that they get to, to the right people.
Okay, we're going to take a vote. And it's for both the ed plan and the space plan. Are we ready? Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you very much. Onward to the next step, so many. Onward to the next step, so many, so many steps. Again, you're welcome to stay with us, but you're also welcome to go back to your homes and enjoy your evening. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back on schedule, it's amazing. And we're going to move to our discussion and possible vote on school resource officers. David Pearlman, am I turning it over to you?
Yes, all right. So earlier today at the policy subcommittee meeting, we met and reviewed draft number six. We fine tuned it a bit with some wordsmithing. There were a lot of helpful edits that came from both subcommittee members as well as committee members who are present for that meeting. And a non-quorum also assisted offline with some suggestions. So the, you have two drafts before you right now. Version number six is the one that was approved by the, and recommended by the policy subcommittee for a vote by the full school committee. And version seven reflects a few additional changes based on feedback that I received in the aftermath of that meeting. Those changes on version seven are relatively minor. Some, some grammar change. And also, there had been a public commenter at the policy subcommittee meeting who made a certain point about the way we had phrased the student responses, particularly the minority student responses to whether they feel safer with SROs. And the point was that saying that you don't agree with feeling safer is not the same as saying you feel unsafe, that it could mean neutral. So just in order to, out of abundance of caution, to not make a precise assumption of what those students meant, the language has been changed somewhat in version seven so that it's an accurate reflection of the way that the survey to the students was phrased. Other than that, some other changes that, not to version seven, but with what you see with version six compared to the prior versions we had reviewed about a week ago, there is added language to mention that the school committee, that we were not consulted back in 2019 when the decision was made to enter into the memorandum of agreement. Some other additions, we have now some headings for each of the three major sections, just to try to improve the flow when someone's reading through and not get lost in it, because this is a significantly longer document than what we normally would vote on for a position statement. The most significant changes were to the order of some of the statements and conclusions we made. Several members felt that rather than having that buried somewhere in the middle after discussion of process, we should lead off with it toward the top. So that's why the first full paragraph reads differently than it did before. And does anyone else want to add something about differences between this one and the draft of a week ago?
Can I just ask one question? So version seven is where for us to look at?
It was also emailed to you early on during this meeting.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right.
So is the, is, is your policy committee, David, recommending version six or version seven? I guess you voted on version six, but you've made some changes and made version seven?
Right, so officially, we recommended version six. Version seven is just slightly different. So I would like members to review version seven and see if as a full school committee, we would like to refine the subcommittee's recommendation. And as a full committee, approve version seven. And of course, I would want to hear from the subcommittee members of policy as well as to whether they are comfortable with the changes that can all be found in the first paragraph, in that first full paragraph.
That's what, I'm sorry, that's what the changes are for version seven in the first paragraph?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, David, is it only the first paragraph that's changed?
Yes.
And the, the first paragraph in the first section?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
David, did you not also make changes to the beginning of section two, the, the second sub-headed section?
I think that was part of our version six that was approved.
I see, sorry.
So how do committee members feel about the statement? Not just six verse seven, but overall?
Helen?
I agree with the statement. I'm wondering, because some people won't get past the first sentence. They will stop there. If it makes sense, because I think at the end, we talk about working together with the police department to continue our, our relationship that we've had forever with them in terms of our, our mutual, you know, goals of, for students. Not with the SRO per se, but, I mean, for years, the high school administration would meet with the the head, chief of police and those sorts of things. The programs that we may want to, to do. I, I wonder if there should be, you know, in, in addition to the, on June 14th, voted to recommend ending and, and possibly something about continuing our collaborative work with the police department. Without having a uniformed officer in the building. Does that, does that work for the committee? I'm, I'm coming in at the 11th hour, so I can be voted down on this one, that's okay.
I, I think there's a lot of language in there currently on, on our intended willingness to continue working with the police department. And that the, the first sentence or the first paragraph, I think, is best served by just stating a rationale and the, and how, what this recommendation is likely to affect. I, I think there's, there's, there's quite a bit in there. I hear you though, Helen, that it's not the first thing. My two cents.
Oh, it does have, you know, at the end, it says next step. So it's pretty clear where you should go if you want to know what's, what we're, what we're thinking for the future. I, I just, I worry a little bit sometimes that it's confusing what we're actually trying to say. If we say we voted no and, and then we say but, it should be an and so that, you know, people are with us still or understand what we're trying to say.
Yeah.
Where are you talking about Suzanne? Just so I'm clear, where's the but versus and?
Well, Helen was saying that to add something at the very first sentence. Right, Helen?
Yeah, I mean, what, our vote is a vote. Are we voting, you know, I think that what comes after is rationale for, for everything. It's maybe not, I don't know if that's, I don't know. You know what? Whatever the, the committee thinks, I, I, I'm coming in at the 11th hour and I don't think that's fair.
I would support what the committee wrote. I mean, this is going, this is a recommendation to the select board. So I presume it's going to be sent to them by either you, David, or you Suzanne. And so you could always allude to reading the whole five pages, you know, making sure that they looked at the end, because it's not just a document for the general public, although it'll also be seen to them, but specifically to the select board.
Yeah, that's a good point. And David's actually presenting at the select board tomorrow, because you and I are in negotiations with Andy, but right. So, yeah, Susan?
Um, one quick point and then a question. Is it, Helen, would it help if we said the first sentence and then this document reviews the rationale and ends with next steps or something? So that it just finishes the complete thought, so people understand that there's, or the process going forward? Does something so people keep reading?
Exactly.
Okay. I, I don't know if that's friendly or not, but that, that makes sense to me. Yeah. And I, I've spoken a lot on this issue, so I'm not going to repeat anything I've said before. I would just say that I think it does a really good job of centering the experiences of our students of color and others who feel less safe as a result of the program. So I think that's important. I'm very happy that it doesn't assume that whatever is next is going to be a program. I think that word can sometimes trip people up. I also think the next steps make a lot of sense. And I think that it, what's nice about it is that it puts work on the district to do over the summer, but also refers explicitly to engaging stakeholders, including students who are affected, families who are affected in the fall, which I think is really important. I don't think we'd want to redesign anything without their input, just as we haven't done this without their input. So at any rate, I, I appreciate all those things. I guess my only question is, somehow the word intimidation is like jumping out at me now. Because I think we mean that that's more of a systemic and a policy issue, not a piece of feedback we got about any one individual. I'm, I'm wondering if maybe there's some language around a concern about the role of an atmosphere of over-surveillance or something like that? Because I'm not sure, I heard intimidation in the surveys. And because it's in that paragraph now, it almost makes it sound like, because it's in the paragraph with the local data piece in particular, sort of makes it sound like we heard that about our local SROs, which, which I didn't hear. So I'm just wondering if concern over, either make it clear that that's, we didn't hear that locally or if that's too clunky, which it probably is. Talk a little bit about over-surveillance or overpolicing or something rather than intimidation. I just don't want people to get the wrong impression about what we heard in the data.
Maybe one way to handle that would be to not really qualify it one way or the other and just say, express concern over an environment of armed, uniformed police officers.
Uh huh, okay. Jennifer?
Um, David, can you, I, I was comfortable with the one we voted earlier and it's just getting late. Can you just remind me what, why there's a change in paragraph one?
Because in the version that we approved, we said that students felt less, less safe. And the point was made that we don't really know that from the way that the survey question was stated. It asked, do, do SROs make you feel safer? Do you feel comfortable talking to SROs? So if you answer no to that, that doesn't necessarily mean that you feel unsafe or that you feel uncomfortable. You could also maybe be indifferent or neutral or not know. So it's trying to correct for that.
I'll just say, David, I support that change. I think it's not to over ascribe findings to the local data that we've collected, especially because that point is borne out by the national data. And I think there's, the recommendation still stands as an equity issue, even if that national data didn't make that point for us.
I'm just reading then what I think is seven. And it doesn't seem, it just seems longer, but that piece doesn't seem to be missing. So what I, I.
It's hard to put the two together and see it.
I think Jennifer, it's the phrase, locally, we say that they do not feel safer, right? But globe, but, but nationwide, they feel less safe, is that, I don't have.
Yeah, I think that's.
That's right. And so the commenter at our meeting earlier was trying to draw that distinction, right? And so that, so we are doing that now.
No, that totally makes sense. I'm just looking at the actual language on seven. That's, I just, it's just, I think it's not clear to me, because it says, local data reflects, students do not feel safer and more comfortable with SROs, which I thought we were just saying we didn't want to put in there.
That, that is what, that is what it means if the respondent said disagree to the question, do SROs make you feel safer? But our commenter was saying that, that you can't go further and claim that they, that makes, that SROs make them feel less safe, right? But we do that in the next sentence for, for the national level.
I see. Is that the only change is in that sentence right there? Is that the only difference?
Uh, no, so the first sentence changed a bit.
Added on, okay.
Uh, other comments, are we ready for a vote? David, looks like you're still working it.
Uh, just, uh, looks like we need to make another grammatical change here.
That's always another one.
Our rationale for recommending the ending of the SRO program is that the racial disparity around perceptions of safety and feelings of comfort with SROs were borne out locally, should probably is borne out locally. This racial disparity being the subject of the sentence or the second parts. It's a little bit of a run-on, so it's hard.
Our rationale is. Miss Cyma Marian?
If we're doing the FPG grammar, then I would also point out that data is plural. So we need to change those two occurrences to plural, plural verbs.
Trust the scientist to point out that data is plural.
Did we take out, I'm sorry, just going back to the very end of that first paragraph, David? Did we decide we were taking out intimidation or did we add language around that?
I just changed it to express concern over an environment of armed, uniformed police officers. That makes it more neutral and we don't have to necessarily delve into over-surveillance, under-surveillance.
Okay, just double checking, because I, I don't think I have a version open that's updating. So I just wanted to make sure that. I had, that we had changed it, thank you.
David, would you be able to share your screen so that we can just kind of look at the, the final version of that paragraph?
I don't, oh, here we go.
Are you doing it in Google Docs or you're just doing it on your own?
Yep, we can, I can see it.
So it's basically this first paragraph. Oh, I also added Susan's suggestion here. This document reviews the rationale and lays out the next steps. It somewhat addresses Helen's point.
Yeah, that will help people to go further.
And David, can we change a reflects and shows to reflect and show?
That's right.
Well, David's rereading that, I'd like, if I may, Suzanne, just thank David again for putting in a lot of work on constructing the statement.
Yes, I think Susan also gets a few.
Yes, I think she did help with that. So thank you to you both.
And thank you to the policy subcommittee for bringing this forward. I know you spent many hours on it.
All right, so going through here, are there any other changes that the full committee would like to make?
This isn't a change, but I just want to note one thing that was pointed out to me during, between the last meeting and this meeting, which is that there are many, many things that SROs do that school committee members may or may not be aware of for privacy issues or for any number of reasons. And so I think just, I want to really emphasize the importance of the last paragraph to make sure that somehow, some way, we do understand the full extent of what SROs do when, when thinking about this. So we need a recommendation from administration, but it just came to my attention with many examples of things that SROs do that the school committee is not aware of. So I just, we need to find a way to get that information through this process.
Is it clear that we are keeping them till the end of the year? Or is that not the case here? I know it's just a week, but just curious.
That's why I have had some conversations with the office of town council that, and what was explained to me is, and I, I emailed this, I believe, to the full school committee earlier today, that essentially for us to exit the SRO program, the current MOA would need to be rescinded. Uh, so the timing of when that rescission might occur could be at the end of the school year to resolve.
I see, at our workshop.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Are we ready to take a vote? We need a motion. David, do you want to do the?
I was sorry, Suzanne, can I just, I was just listening to that last bit. Can you just clarify the bit about when the, what Helen's question again about timing?
It's, it's basically up to whenever the superintendent would want to rescind the MOA. So it's at the superintendent's discretion essentially for when the SRO program would end, or at least the MOA, and that's what would enable us to exit this.
So the MOA has to be rescinded before we vote to recommend ending this?
No, we can make a recommendation anytime we want, but in terms of when it goes into effect of it, of the program actually ending, this is just a recommendation, but this is not the actual ending of it. To actually end the program, the superintendent would need to rescind the MOA.
And town council recommended that that happen?
Town council didn't make a political recommendation. They're just saying that technically in order to end the SRO program, the MOA needs to be rescinded.
So why did Helen ask us to say something about the workshop? That's what I'm trying to understand is what the workshop date has to do with any of this.
It's next time we meet.
That could just be the timing for when the superintendent rescinds, but it could be sooner than that. Helen had expressed a concern about rescinding right away before the school year is over.
Okay, but the rescission doesn't need to happen at a public school committee meeting, does it? Okay, thank you.
David, do you want to motion, put a motion on the floor?
Yes, I would like to move that we support this recommendation to the select board to eliminate the, to end the school resource officer program.
And I can't see, if you could, I'm not sure your screen, that would be helpful for a second. Steven seconds it. Okay. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Okay, here we go. Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you very much for all that hard work. I know it's a big effort. Thank you to Erin for conducting the survey on short notice. That was a lot of work as well. Okay, we are going to move on to update on budgets. I have Doc Marini and Mariah.
Well, thank you. As we all know, Mary Ellen is not able to be with us for her personal reasons that she's dealing with bereavement. And Mariah, we're gonna, we're gonna join together here in terms of reporting out. Are you with me on that? Okay.
I am.
Good. So the FY21 budget closing, that we're, we're headed to town.
Select board.
To the select board next week.
Correct. We're going to this, we're scheduled to go to the select board a week from tomorrow.
Yep.
To present the reserve fund transfer. Do you want me to keep talking about it, Jim, or do you want to talk about it?
No, why don't you keep talking about it?
Okay, so this is the $1.3 million reserve fund transfer that was, if I recall correctly, voted by school committee in our, in our most recent meeting. And due to a confluence of scheduling conflicts, we are finally going to make it to the select board next week to present that, to have it forwarded to advisory committee, hopefully for their consideration, possibly the next day, along with several other reserve fund transfers I understand that are in consideration.
And I don't, I don't believe we need a voter. I think we've already voted it. So it's just info like this.
This is information, but how about the FY22 budget, Mariah? As, as we go forward with that, we have an obligation under Essar.
Correct. So, so the FY22 budget, we are still, as, as members of the school committee and many other, and staff know, the Essar II and Essar III funds are currently allocated within our budget. And the Essar III funds, this past week, a federal obligation was made clear to perform a community engagement stakeholder outreach process. Of course, as part of our budget development, there was a public hearing and community engagement process, but as part of the terms of the Essar III grant, because it requires that explicitly, we will be going through that in the very near term as well to have a, a meeting about the Essar III use of funds. And what, what we've been talking about as well as just making sure that the community realizes that as those funds are currently allocated in the budget, it's, it's good to hear the ideas, but to understand that barring any other funds being made available to replace those Essar funds, if we were to reallocate Essar III funds to something else, that would mean that something in the current budget would need to be eliminated. So while we still have not, the town has not received full federal guidance on the American Rescue Plan funds, which are the other element of our budget uncertainty that's still pending. We are, we are, until those ARP funds are, have more full guidance from the federal government and from the state, they are not going to be used in our base budget. At some point, we may be able to implement some ARP funds. And we just don't know to what level yet. So there's a lot of uncertainty in the FY22 budget as far as the use of ARP funds. So just a lot of uncertainty in general. As I said, we are waiting for the federal guidance and then the state specific guidance relating to ARP. But many sort of pending elements as we are two weeks out from the start of the 22 fiscal year.
Okay, so we also engaged in a discussion with the, with BASE, Brookline Adult and Community Education Program. And those were the budget, the finance subcommittee meeting. We had a reasonably good discussion about all, the audit came in.
Michelle's actually here, Jim, if we want to. Michelle's gonna present.
I'm sorry, Michelle, I didn't notice you. Go ahead.
That, that is quite all right. That's quite all right. I'd like to go ahead and share my screen. I'm gonna do that momentarily here. And I promise I'll move through this very quickly. I know it's past everybody's bedtime. Or at least mine. Okay, can everybody see the screen? Yes. Okay. All right. Perfect. So to start off with, we did, we did just recently get the results of the audit that was conducted by CLA and associates. And the, the good news is that the, the analysis revealed that there was no malfeasance or any issues of, of any significance that, that they brought forward. So that was good. We didn't, we didn't think there would be, but it's always nice to know when they go back and double check things. One of the big questions we had was about the loan that BASE provided to the, the district and that, that money had been returned. So that was verified by the auditor as well. Some concerns came out, one of them being, you know, there were a lot of misconceptions about a surplus that BASE had been generating when actually we were in a deficit. Even one of the, the operating, operational reviews that was conducted indicated that. So there were, there were some times along the way that perhaps we should have realized that this was happening, but we were getting some misinformation. So some of their recommendations is just that we really need to update our policies between the school district, the school committee and BASE itself. BASE needs to do some more procedural things as far as its internal operations. And one of the, the big things is, you know, looking to hire some accounting support for the program. And I, I just submitted a, a listing over to human resources to take a look at and hopefully we'll move forward with that as, as soon as possible. And then the final recommendation was just to revisit the document where, you know, what kind of agreements and, you know, putting pen to paper and putting a policy around any room rental fees or any assessments that might be made with BASE. So just, that's kind of a quick summary of his report. You've all received a copy of it and I'm happy to answer any questions. Okay, I'm just gonna keep moving forward and just jump in if you do. One of the things that the report did show, it did confirm that we have seen declining revenues since 2017 was the last year that we made a large profit, which was about $1.6 million. And then you can see from this chart that it's just declined over a few years past that, but then a significant drop because of the pandemic. And because of the pandemic, we, we estimate we've lost close to $700,000 in revenues since the pre-pandemic year. So it's been a huge, you know, negative impact on, on, on our program. And we are very appreciative of the support that the school committee has given us in the most recent fiscal year to subsidize the program in the short term so that we can continue to move forward. So I'm working with Finance and with Mariah's guidance as well, with all of her expertise in numbers and accounting to really work towards formulating some better guidelines and projections as we move forward so that we don't find ourselves in this predicament any longer. I actually, I'm gonna pass it over to Mariah a little bit about, so we've recently had a meeting on music extension and I believe she wanted to discuss that with the group.
Thanks, Michelle. So, so this is a recap of some of the conversation that we had at Finance last Thursday where we discussed the, the vote that we're gonna actually, that we took at Finance and we're gonna, going to have full school committee affirm tonight. And, and part of it is about, if you look about, in the middle of this, you can see there's a room use assessment and the finance subcommittee voted three to zero to zero, four to zero to zero on Thursday to, at least for the upcoming year, remove the room use assessment specifically for the music extension program, not for the entire BASE program. And, and really the discussion about that, and I just want to recap it. And I, I thank Susan for bringing this up at the meeting as well, is the conversation focused about the, the role of music extension is essentially a co-curricular activity, one of the, the only co-curricular activity that is led by BASE. And, and really unlike any of the other programs that, that is using our, any of the partner programs that's using the PSB space and is subject to room rentals. You know, we have very strong relationships with the extended days and they're really valuable partners and with BASE as well. But this program truly is an extension of the PSB curriculum and was until a few years ago, run out of the music department directly, the performing arts department. And so, and so Finance voted, as I said, three or four zero zero to, to eliminate the assessment for the upcoming year for the music extension. Then the other thing I just want to point out is the, Michelle's projections for, that she had presented on Thursday had private and semi-private, how do I, what are these called? I'm like drawing a blank. Yes, lesson rates. Thank you. That were slightly higher than what's presented here. So this shows $540 for the year for semi-private lessons and $765 for private lessons. Michelle and Kenny and I met earlier today and discussed these rates. So that what you see here is a projection really that shows revenue and looks at all the different expenses that are coming into this. And, and this is the kind of analysis that Michelle mentioned. You know, I'm, she and I are gonna work closely. I'm gonna support her as she thinks about how to do some revenue projections. And we'll come back to full school committee, probably in the next, I would say, month to two months with some, hopefully a, a better documented sense of the different programs that BASE is going to be running and their expected revenue generation as Michelle oversees the return of BASE to post-pandemic profitability. And so, as I said, you know, we have this sort of deeper revenue projection analysis and hopefully we'll have a series of these that'll really give us a sense, a strong sense of the revenues that will be going forward and how those can contribute to making the program cover its expenses, not only cover its expenses, but become profitable.
So Mariah, are you, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yep. So I think if you actually go to, I think the motion's on the next slide. Yep, we have two motions. So the first one, as you can see, is to suspend the room use charges for the music extension program for the upcoming school year, the 2122 school year. And then the second one is to authorize BASE to increase the tuition range for music extension lessons for the 2122 school year. So, oh gosh, was, when was it? I think it was about six weeks ago, school committee voted a range for, as part of our overall fee vote. And this would replace the fee, the fee schedule for music extension that was in that document.
Do you ask to vote for these separately or together?
I think we can probably vote for them together.
Okay. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. I had a couple there. Thank you. Thank you. Conversation, questions, concerns, comments before we vote? I'm not seeing any, but I don't see the full. I guess I can do this. Okay, we'll take a vote then. Thank you. Let's go. Susan? Oh, Susan, are you there? We'll come back. Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Susan, are you there? Okay, we miss Susan. And I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah.
Good night.
You're welcome to stay, but you're welcome to leave as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and now I have recognition of school and town partners for their support.
Wait, wait a second.
Yeah, there we go.
You have number 10, Suzanne?
No, I'm not there yet. I'm on nine D.
Okay. Okay.
Still under budgets, recognition of school and town partners for their support during the pandemic.
Well.
Is that you, Jim?
That's me. I was wondering whether that is me. But I certainly will start off these acknowledgements because they are quite a few. And, you know, it's amazing, you know, when you say it takes a village, when you look to see the, the organizations that support, the part of the schools, others that just support the schools, I mean, it's, it's pretty impressive. And it takes a while just to know they're here. There are so many of them and they really contribute significantly. I mean, the Brookline Education Foundation is just an extraordinary organization that is extremely generous and focused in its support of the schools. And there's many things that would not happen without the support of the foundation, frankly. And then you have the Brookline High School Innovation Fund that, which I find interesting, particularly since in this day of MCAS test and accountability, this. This organization, the Innovation Fund, tries to seed creativity and sort of experimentation and the kind of the the kind of initiatives that give real excitement to teaching. And this this group put the Innovation Fund very clear in what they're willing to support so that they bring out the excitement of what it means to teach and be freed from some of the restrictions we have. Of course, the PTO and Site Council, those groups are tireless and they were absolutely tireless. And you can see even with the celebrations at the end of the year at each school, RLA is another example where the where the PTOs are really committed. And what's interesting is I meet with them on a monthly basis. They're committed not just for their school, they're committed to the district. And they like to communicate with each other so that they're supportive of the students across the district. Very impressive. Special Education Parent Advisory Council, CPAC. There's another group that really works closely with Casey in her and her department. Supports students and and gives voice to to parents and of course reports directly to the school committee. So they're 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 an integral part of the school system, steps to success. A really, the kind of effort that's a partnership with the community and in a reach out outreach that makes a difference in the lives of students and families in a substantive way. It's it's an organization that the little interaction I've had, I was very proud to be in to attend their meetings and to assist in any way that the school department could because of the work that they do to support our students. Brookline Center for Mental Health, that's going to become much more focused as we move into next year as well. To as they connect with the schools and really take a look at what's what what all of our students and families have been through and what kind of resource and help that they can be. Medco Program, thank goodness for the Medco Program, they're value added. We all benefit from the Medco Program and the work that happens here and the and Keith, who runs that program is he really works in partnership with Brookline and Brookline Schools are enriched by the program. The Select Board Town Administrators and Deputy Town Administrator. The the relationship there is extraordinary. I I talked to Mel Kleckner from time to time and the Select Board has been you know, very supportive and and working with the the school partnership, the school town partnership, when we have some of those people present, they they not only want to oversee what's happening in the town fiscally, but they want to see what's happening in the town so they can be supportive of the schools. And it they're unapologetically supportive. Granted, they they want us to to be responsive and responsible in what we do, but boy, are they encouraging. It's I sometimes meet Mel on the way in and it's a joy to connect. And because you know that you're working towards the same goal. And so you 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 reach out and try to talk with with this group to get some advice as well as support. They've been great. Department of Public Health, we've worked clearly through the pandemic, we've worked with the Department of Public Health. Dr. Jet has been a real partner with us. Trish Laham, I mean, she is unbelievable and she works very closely with Dr. Jet. And together they made some very important decisions to support. Particularly as we were moving into the spring and Desi was changing its ground rules and they were changing them sometimes rapidly and Dr. Jet was with Patricia and writing with Tricia and writing to the to the principals, giving guidance and and he was, they were right there together. Putting together a guidance for the principals and therefore for the PTOs to follow as well. And of course, that changes months after, weeks after it was put in place. But working with the Department of Public Health all along has been has been very, very good. Information Technology Department, wow. You know, what else? What can you say when everyone across the district and not just in the district now, we're talking in the community as well to keep that technology up and running can be extremely frustrating. But here again, that whole group pulling together with us. The Brookline Food Pantry. I don't think anything is as emotional as the Brookline Food Pantry. You mean, we talk about the very essence of what it's about. It's it it really speaks very highly to what Brookline really delivers on over and over. It's 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 the kind of spirit that really does keep you going. And the Brookline Housing Authority. And looking at connectivity, looking at services, being able to advocate and and work together. It's a community, it's a community effort like, I mean, I personally have never seen. And it it cuts across all areas of the community, ties directly to the schools. There's this, there 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 is really a a sense of one department successes, every everyone's success. So everyone is invested in everybody else's success. That's my definition of community and that is here. It's not always smooth, it's not always easy, it's clearly, but that's okay. That's the stuff of life. What is reliable, dependable, consistent? And and part of what it means to be in Brookline is that these groups all care about the human condition. They all care about what's happening to the individual. And it it's really true. I said at graduation that wherever these kids go, they'll always be part of Brookline. And Brookline will always be their home. This is why, and it truly is. And and Brookline will always be their home. These these organizations that come together contribute in a way that words really don't describe, feelings do. And and they, as I say, they, this these groups with the schools, with the town, work to really touch the lives of people in a very positive way. There is just no question about that. So it's terrific to recognize them here tonight. And it also gives us a moment to reflect and say, you know, it it really does make a difference what 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 happens here. It honestly does make a difference. So it's great to recognize them and you may want to say a few things too, but it's great to recognize them. And you always feel a sense of psychological safety because there's 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 a group, there's an organization that cares about you as a person. That's that's unbelievable, but that's what's happening. And it's because of these, it's because of the community, but these groups are central to that. So yeah, great to be able to talk about this group.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Like you, you had a long list. That's how many partners we have. That's Mariah.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo everything that Jim said. And you know, this year even, I'll say possibly more than many others. Like so much of what we've been able to do has been enabled through partners as we acknowledged, you know, our panel partners earlier and our educator partners and staff partners earlier and and Jim mentioned so many and the year is not over yet. You know, we're still going to the Select Board and the Advisory Committee next week. You know, but we also had Town Meeting who, you know, has repeatedly supported the schools. And even I think about, you know, our our grift, our gifts and our grants. And I think about even the Gaussian Middle School, who all the way from China is supporting Brookline. And so Jim's right, it's not just in the community, it goes well beyond and across the world to get that kind of support to make this year happen with all the resources that we needed for success. So thanks also to those partners for me.
I would also add that many of them are run by volunteers boards, but perhaps they're not paid. And so anyway, there's many opportunities for community members to be involved in any number of ways with these organizations and with our schools. And so we welcome all that community help and volunteer hours are just enormous and it's very helpful.
Not always. Don't, don't, you're trying to sell volunteers, I'm saying.
Just takes a little bit of your time, that's all.
The other thing I wanted to call out too, especially and we heard earlier from the Food Pantry is Brookline thrives, who's been such an amazing partner with the food program as well.
That's right. Thrives as well. Okay, any other comments or thoughts? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jim, for that. We're moving down to number 10, which is a possible vote to approve the non aligned salary ranges and hourly rates. Joe, you're down for that, but I'm not sure if that needed to go to Finance. Did that go to Finance Subcommittee? Yeah, I don't know, Joe. What what are we thinking here?
Well, it's really what we're looking for. There's, there's nothing that's really changed in it in terms of a financial piece. It's all really the same document that you've received before. The only increase is a one director salary that it goes, there's an increase that was supposed to be put in last year apparently and did not get voted. So that's for a summer program. So it would be really helpful if we could, you know, get approval of that so that the person could get their their salary for the summer. The only and also it's added just a few positions that the Universal Summer Enrichment Program is there. Just so you know what the rates are. And also for your information, just a couple of new positions that were were put in there that are part of the document that are, let me see, I can tell you which positions they are, which you've probably already seen, but the Coordinator of Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health for Medco Program, the Assistant Director for Guidance, Clinical Services and Social Emotional Learning, the Payroll Coordinator, which just is a title change. And then the the increase to the Discovery Director. So those are the things in terms of the other lines, they are really the same salaries because we're not putting any increases in dependent on what happens in negotiations with the BEU. So it's really more informational, the rest of it. But it it helps us move forward with the, you know, the ranges that we have for each of the non aligned positions.
Yes, Mariah.
I have a question about that, Joe, because I was looking at it and there is increases put in for many of the positions. Like the summer school, I'm just looking at summer school security has one. Student AIDS, it looks like some of them have changed. And I just had a question about how this maps to the budget for stipends.
So we, you know, this was lined up with the Business and Finance Department, Administration Finance Department. So Mary Ellen went through these with me to sort of a while back to put them in place. My thoughts are that for most of them, we looked like we tried to keep them aligned. So I'm looking to find where you are seeing other than the Universal Summer Reaching Program, which
I'm looking at page five.
Thank you.
Yep.
And in the category of
Sorry, I just managed to pad. So if you look at summer programs and just look at the first table that's right there and I just noticed a couple of changes.
The student AIDS went 30 cents an hour.
If you go down to calculus project, that's changed too.
And yes, we tried to align that so that everyone was, you know, the 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 teacher counselors from the Universal Summer Program and the teachers in Star Academy and the the BHS Calculus Project were all aligned. We're trying to align where we could.
And so is this, are these changes in the new budget? Have we, we've already put them in?
These were, I think, when Mary Lynn was proposing putting the budget together, yes, she did use these as a guideline, is my understanding.
Yeah, Helen, did you want to?
And some of them are funded through, you know, there are other grant sources as well, some of these summer programs.
Now, I I do think we need to vote it to be able to hire the people for the summer and that they'll know what they're going to get. I would have wished that we had a discussion just in general about this. I think, Joe, you had said something in in your letter about, you know, comparable communities, but I didn't see that piece.
Yes, I'm sorry. That doesn't seem to be attached. I apologize for that.
Yeah. But if most of it is not changed and the pieces that are the new the new positions and the sort of making all the summer positions the same. I I I guess I I'm okay with going ahead. In the future, I would like it to.
Yes, I think we had intended to do this earlier and it fell off the map for a little while. Sorry.
No, and I think this has happened every year. If I remember correctly, people who are hiring for the summer positions are feeling like, what do we, come on, just voted already. I remember Vicky coming to us, Vicky Millstein, saying, I need to know what we're going to be paying people. So.
Yeah, Andy?
Joe, I think you may have said earlier that some things are still waiting on the outcome of negotiations with the BEU.
The first two pages are the the, if you look in the first two pages, which are the non aligned range salaries. So you see there are ranges. What tends to happen is that you'll see there's the two lines for salary and FY20 salary FY21. So those are standard. What usually happens is that once the increase is decided upon, then you will remove the FY20 line, the 20, there'll be added a salary line for FY22, which will be whatever, if there's a percentage increase added, if it's 0%, will just change the years to keep it as is, but.
So it would match like Unit B or Unit A?
Usually, usually that, as a general rule, that's the case. And because there's a range, because there are ranges, you know, individual salaries fall within the range.
Thanks.
Okay, yeah, I would, I I would like for this to have come through Finance and then come to us, but it doesn't seem to have worked that well this year. But I just think as as a protocol, that's how it should be done.
I understood. I think there was some, you know, a little miscommunication in and in the absence, you know, with Mary Ellen working on the budget so intently, I think it fell a little bit through the cracks. I apologize for that.
And and maybe next time also to discuss this in, because it's personnel issues, an executive session when then, you know, voted in.
I'll make note to make sure that we put this on the docket earlier next year so that it can be
Right.
vetted in a more thorough way.
It could be executive session and the Finance Subcommittee was fine too.
Yeah. Well, it seems to me it's part of the budget for the for the next year.
It's both, but at first you have to, it's a, you know, a personnel issue.
Okay, do we have a motion for this?
There is a motion on the front page, the first page.
You want to read that, Joe?
Sure. So the motion is to approve salary ranges and pay rates under Chapter 71, Section 59B to approve the FY22 salary ranges and hourly rates included in the FY21 Non-Aligned Recommendations Memorandum dated June 8, 2021.
Does someone move that motion? Can Joe move? No. Mariah, okay, someone second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Okay, David did too. Any other comments or questions? I think told you a little bit about how we feel about the process, but.
Understood.
Okay, I'm not trying to scold you. I'm just, just thinking.
Okay, I'll take it. No problem.
Just thinking out loud. That's okay. Okay, I'm not seeing any comments or questions. We'll move to the vote. David?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Susan?
I'm abstaining.
And David?
I already voted yes.
Oh, you did. Andy? I know, you, no, no, sorry, sorry. Andy?
Yes.
I got mixed up and I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you. We are moving along. And we are on subcommittees and liaison reports. Do we have anyone to report? Helen?
So Capital Subcommittee, we canceled this month's Subcommittee because there was so much going on that people need to finish out the year and there wasn't a big need for having it in June. However, However, there will be a Capitol Subcommittee in July. I spoke actually yesterday with Erin Chute-Galantine about the tennis court restoration at Baker School and along with the staircase to, to the school and the access to the horse sanctuary. All of that is out to bid right now, and we'll be going. This is informative for the school committee. We don't have a say in this. However, she has contacted Matt Gillis and Torrance Lewis to, to, you know, make sure we coordinate that children and parents know where, what's happening and that, that the school committee know what's happening. To that end, she's agreed to come to the Capitol Subcommittee to let us know about the project. By then, it will have been, the bids will have come in, and they will know the contractor and some of the logistics of what is going to happen. In addition, while we were talking, we talked about the school playgrounds and the need for an update on what, what their plans are for. As people may or may not know, the Department of Parks and Recreation are in charge of our playgrounds, both the maintenance and the renovations of them. And so she will be coming to talk with us about the ones that haven't been renovated recently or aren't in the process of being renovated. And also at that meeting, we hope to discuss ways forward with our capital plan. So that's, I think, all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Helen. David, did you want to go forward? Policy, I think there's a possible vote.
Yes, that's right. So it was brought to my attention that when we altered the current face mask policy that we had approved at the beginning of the year for COVID-19, that the precise language of the policy said that the school committee needs to rescind in order for the policy, in order for there to be a departure in the practice of how we were masking on school grounds. So this vote is to bring us into alignment with what has already taken place in part, which is a change in current masking protocols on school grounds. So I'd like to propose that we rescind elements of the face mask policy so that the superintendent, at his discretion, can be making amendments that are in accordance with public health recommendations and the prevailing conditions that are currently present.
Okay, do I have a second? Mariah, you're seconding it?
I have a second and a question.
Okay, seconded, great. And now go for your question.
So my question is, so what exactly are we, are we amending it? Or are we rescinding it? Or is the idea where we're rescinding it and then going to present another one in the future? Just because masks were so amazing this year for reducing illness, so I could imagine a world in which if we were in a heavy flu season, we might want to encourage them. I'm just wondering what you're thinking going forward.
The goal here is not to remove this policy from the books because, as you just said, there could be other times that we would want to bring it back exactly as it's written. This is simply to address the one line that's at the end of the policy that says that this must be rescinded by a vote of the school committee. Now, all of our policies, whether they mention that or not, there's a mechanism by which we can remove them from our policy manual. We've already done that in an instance earlier this year. So this is not the goal of this vote. This vote is simply to provide discretionary flexibility to the superintendent to put into practice masking policies that match the prevailing conditions on the ground currently. Because the face mask policy that was passed early this fall at the outset of the school year was designed for the full-blown pandemic, and we're no longer adhering to that. So this is to make the current practices align with our overall policies.
So can I, I just ask clarification. So are we, are we, are you asking us to edit, to remove that one line? Or to actually vote to rescind it now with the idea that it'll come back in a modified format? I'm not, like, because the current, the thing that's in the folder is the old policy. I'm not, I'm not understanding what the action is here.
Just the old policy spells out that we have to make a vote in order to change what it is that we are doing with masking. And because we've already made that change, I would prefer that the superintendent have the discretion to be able to prescribe whatever condition seemed reasonable for the moment. So we are not eliminating the policy from the book. What we are doing is rescinding the practices that are laid out in that policy for the time being.
I still don't understand, but I hope someone else will clarify.
Jennifer?
I think, which, I think, Mariah, what you're asking is, what is the motion on the table? Are we simply removing one line, right? Is that what you want to do? So I just, maybe if, David, if you put a motion on the table for a possible vote, that might clarify things. Because I think what you're saying, if I understand right, is to remove that line. Or are we going to alter that line? No?
Removing that line would mean that we have the full-blown pandemic masking requirements in place for everything forever. So it's just saying that it's up to, it's ultimately up to the school committee whether we continue with masking as though we're in the midst, in the throes of the pandemic when it was at its apex. So the vote is to not have to adhere to those restrictions, to leave it to the discretion of the superintendent.
Does that require a change in language in the policy?
I do not believe so. Do others feel that does?
I don't know. Andy, you want to shed some light here?
Absolutely, a change in language. I'm not sure what it means to leave a policy on the books and simply not adhere to it. Like, how do we indicate that we're not adhering to it? Like, someone leaving through the policy manual online, like, how will they know that this policy is not currently in force?
All right, then I guess we might as well rescind it and bring it back, and probably shouldn't have had that sentence in there on the first one. But I do think it's problematic for us to have a policy that's requiring full masking and a lot of detail, and then we're not in alignment with it.
So it'd probably be better to abolish it, and if we need to bring it back, I mean, we can dig up the document and just vote it through again, right? But to leave it on the books as a dead letter seems questionable.
David, should this go to policy and you get through this in policy, and then you bring it back to us? I feel like we're confused. We're not quite ready for the vote. I'm sure you think it's straightforward, but we're all a little confused.
One, one way to possibly think about this when you go back to policy is to leave this policy as a policy only during times of pandemics or, you know, something to that effect. So you have the policy. You don't have to rewrite the policy. It's only effective when there is a pandemic or a public health crisis.
Which would lose the whole bit about flu season being nice to use them.
Well, public health crisis is flu, and I, you know, it's-
I'm not sure, but anyway, I almost believe her point.
David, I hate to do this. I know you thought this was like a done deal, but we're all so confused. I'm sorry. If you could just take it back to policy, your team is so good. You'll figure it out and bring it back to us.
We weren't told we needed to meet again until the fall, right? So.
You don't need it until the fall.
We could rescind the policy, and then you could start over again for the fall if you want.
But doesn't the current practice mean that kids are wearing masks in the building at all time and teachers? So wouldn't we be, we are, we are, it's like a Schrödinger's policy where if we rescind it, we are violating the fact that kids are wearing masks in the building. And if we don't rescind it, we're violating the fact that kids aren't wearing masks outside.
I think you got to bring it back to us, David. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jennifer.
I was just going to say, I guess in my mind, I was thinking that we would just change the language, wherever it is, to say that it's at the, that the masking requirements are at the discretion of the superintendent. I thought that's where we were heading, but I think we have to change at least one line of the language in order to reflect that it's not, that the school committee doesn't have to rescind the policy, just that whatever the mask, I guess we're going to have to look at it. I don't know. I just, I agree, we should be following whatever the policy is that we wrote. And if we need, if there's a change in practice, we need to change the policy. I just don't know how we can-
Rescind the policy and leave it to the discretion of the superintendent. I mean, I guess I could vote for that.
Mariah?
So if we look at the second paragraph, where it says a face covering, blah, 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 must be worn by all individuals, da, 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 da. Or, and then we could just put in parentheses or comma at the end of that, or at the discretion of the superintendent.
Does that do it for you, David?
Let's go without that works.
Okay, maybe we can make this work after all. So can you, let's-
I move that.
Okay, remove that. Do I have a second to that?
A second.
Okay, you're withdrawing your other-
We just repeat what the, what this has.
Okay, so that first sentence of the second paragraph, which starts with "a face covering," and then goes all the way through "social distancing," is observed. And then at the very end of "after observed," put comma or at the discretion of the superintendent. Because that makes the, when you have to wear the mask, at the discretion of the superintendent.
You okay with that, Stephen?
Yeah, sorry, I'm digesting it.
Okay, well, I can tell that you are, the wheels are turning.
Very slowly, sorry.
I don't, yeah, take your time.
You can go ahead, and I'll get there.
I think we're going to take a vote next. Okay, so give it your best shot. Let's see what we've got here. Andy?
I abstain. I can't assimilate this so quickly, what we're doing.
Okay. David?
Yes.
Helen?
I think I might be with Andy. I'm abstaining. I'm not sure.
Okay, well, maybe we do have to, maybe we have to send it back to, send it to committee. Stephen, do you have a thought on this yet?
I abstain as well.
Okay. Jennifer?
So do we just call it at this point?
Well, one, two, three, we've got three abstentions so far.
Okay, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Mariah?
Yes.
Susan?
I'm sorry, I'm abstaining also. I have no idea what we're talking about.
Okay, okay.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. We, I was going to say yes, but we got three yeses and one, two, three, four, five abstentions. I think it needs to go to committee, David. We're just, I'm sorry, we're just confused.
Hold on a second, Suzanne. The committee just voted three to zero to five in favor of the amendment. So you can also ask it to go back for another looksee, but like, we actually did vote in favor of it.
Mariah, don't a majority of the school committee present have to vote? Yes.
I don't know about that. I know that abstentions don't count.
Yeah, she's right, I think.
But I don't know-
They'll have to have a majority of the school committee to vote for something.
Well, if a majority of the school committee did vote, eight people voted.
No, have to vote for or against.
But then what would be the point of-
I remember with the select people, they had to come back with some vote just recently where they, they had a vote of-
Yeah, it was one to zero to four or something like that. Well, anyways, if it counts, then it can count. But either way, I agree with you. It should go back for more thinking.
Jim, are you going to help us out?
I don't know if I'm going to help. I, because I'm, I'm actually a little confused here myself. But I just want to say that as we, if this is the last school committee meeting, and we're going into summer school, and we may have issues around masks, we have to, it's important that Linus is going to have some flexibility because Desi's rules may change, they may not change. So I don't know whether that means that you persist a little bit, at least temporarily, so that he's not stuck, he won't be stuck completely because it's a school committee policy that he can get forgiveness from. But just so that we don't know completely what the rules are going to be, except that it looks like masks are going to be worn, and next year, they're going to be worn in school as of right now. But, you know, that may change.
And outside, are they worn now?
Not, not outside.
Outside, no.
That's, our policy still says that, right?
I believe so. Susan?
Follow Desi guidelines, we'll do it.
Our policy still says that, but only, but if we add this line in, it would be okay.
Right. Susan had her hand up, and then Andy?
I'm not totally caught up on, you know, but don't we have a meeting like in three weeks?
July 6.
So it doesn't solve the summer school problem, but it solves next fall, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Andy?
Wondering, would the simplest thing be to rescind or abolish the policy for now? Right, in the absence of a policy, I think this would be up to the superintendent, which is where we intend to leave it right now anyway. So to not have a face covering policy for the summer is just fine, as long as we trust Jim and Linus to behave sensibly, which we do. That we can do, right? Just abolish the policy for now.
Yeah. Right, I think that's a good recommendation, and if others feel really strong about it, we could bring something back for the July workshop. But for now, we might as well rescind it. Then by default, it would be at the superintendent's discretion is what we're looking for anyway, right now.
I move that we rescind it.
I'll second that.
Okay, should we try that vote? And then, so that vote would put the other one, whatever. Okay, well, let's try it, see what we've got.
Right, just clarifying question again. Of a school, of a, of a mask policy over the summer, should something occur, would the school committee need to reconvene in order to, or would the superintendent have the authority?
Yeah, my understanding is the superintendent would have the authority.
What was the, thank you.
Yep, is that true, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. In the absence of a school committee policy, the superintendent would have the authority to create the policy.
And we would follow Desi guidelines, which we also cleared with the Department of Public Health.
Stephen, were you about to ask why do we have to vote this at all?
I was, but I don't want to.
Okay. There's actually a short answer.
I'd rather just put a vote of trust in Dr. Gilery to do this.
The short answer is that on important things like this, it is important to have school committee, like, elected people vote it. But for right now, we're sort of, all we'd be voting is to give the superintendent discretion, which is not an actual vote. Yeah.
So am I taking a vote? Am I taking a vote? I guess I will. We'll try it. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, so I guess the moral of that story was, nothing's as easy as you think it's going to be because you gotta go through your subcommittee or something like that. Okay, we're back on here, folks. We're trying to get through our subcommittees and liaison reports. Anybody else have something to report? Okay, see none. We're moving on to new business. So this is it. Let's see. Joe's here still, and Mary Ellen's not here. So we will do hers, I think, on Friday. I think there's a little something for her. So this is a big farewell against our wishes, but also a very big thank you to both Jim and Joe. So the good news is, is Joe is going to be consulting for us. So he's not going to be like full-time doing the job for us, but he's going to be consulting and helping us. So thank you for that, Joe. That's great. Joe, you've been just a wonderful addition this year, a breath of fresh air, really working so well with teachers and grievances and union issues and helping all of us understand what needs to be done. My warmest heartfelt thanks for all that you have done for us this year. Welcome back to Brookline. Welcome back to Brookline. It was meant to be, it was meant to be.
Thank you, that's very gratifying. As I said when I came, you know, I, my, my heart has always sort of been in Brookline, beginning of my career. So the fact that I could come and do my little bit to help sort of keep things moving forward, it's been my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Jim, of course, we are still thankful to Helen, as she always reminds us, that she talked you into coming here. So that was, that was good, that was great, that was great. We didn't know, it was, it was touch and go, but I'm so glad you came. I've enjoyed so much working with you. You know, we had a little, a little mantra that we had, you know, go slow to go fast. We did that, you know, stick with the plan. We had to do that, that was not easy. And, and the one that I got from you is, you know, you don't win battles, but you solve problems. And that's, that's exactly what we've tried to do this year, some more successfully than others. But boy, am I indebted to you for your year here with us. It's just made all the difference. I'm sorry, it was such a hard year. Nobody would have wished that on anybody. But I am glad you're at the helm for us for this year. So thank you so very, very much.
Well, thank you, you know, and it was a hard year. But Joe and I were talking this morning, and I said this on Friday, thank you, Helen, Friday was terrific. But that, it was, it was really kind of a weird perspective. But being part of, what Susan referenced, in terms of an event that certainly has happened in our lifetime, hopefully will never happen again. But be, to be part of such an event in the country and in the world and in the town here was really, kind of affirming in a lot of ways. Being in the, the struggle and, and working it through in real time, it really makes you feel alive and makes you feel a part of something that really was important, even though it was difficult, make no mistake about it. Sometimes, you know, painfully difficult. But being a part of the vibrancy of it was really energizing. It's as simple as that. And, and so I, I'm, and I'm thankful that Helen, you know, I wasn't thankful the whole time. But I'm thankful to have, had the opportunity, quite frankly, to be a part of the struggle. I think that's why, you know, Joe and I, we identify with each other. Maybe it's an ethnic thing, I don't know. But, you know, to, to be a part of the struggle in a, in a positive, in a positive way really does give you a sense of purpose. So in spite of the struggle, it was a good year. It really was a good year. So thank you. Yeah, and met some great people, really, honest to God, I've met some great people. Yeah, you know, the, the, the one thing that I, I don't think I'll ever forget is my first couple of weeks here, when it's like, whoa, what are we gonna do? And Casey came in and said, Aaron and I will lead the reopening. And they, they took charge of it. And they presented at school committee meetings, they organized things. And it took, it took a lot of, I think, personal courage and commitment to step up and do that. And I'm really indebted. Michelle has handled the whole office of teaching and learning alone. I mean, absolutely alone. No deputy, no senior directors, no professional development person, just Michelle. And she showed it, the whole thing. She helped enormously to open the Remote Learning Academy. It, I don't, I mean, it was, talk about a struggle. And she worked weekends, Saturday, Sunday, all, all weekend long for the first... Gabe helped a lot with the scheduling. And then all the curriculum stuff that was happening alone. And, and Aaron has a baby through the whole thing and continues communicating. I mean, really, it's amazing. And she's communicating and, you know, really is, is the, the pen behind the weekly updates and checking in, keeping things organized while truly growing her family. I mean, I have a lot more strength than I ever had in my life. And, and I, and I continue to rely on Casey, morning, noon, and night, when as a thought partner and looking at issues that have to be resolved, sitting with, with, with Casey to work through and brainstorming, always, almost the first thing out of her mouth all the time is, what can I do to help? I'll take on this part, I'll take on that part. And it, it's, I mean, it, it really is amazing. I talk to Linus about this all the time. I do believe that Linus has a very, very strong team. A team that is committed to him and to Brookline. I, I mean, I love Linus to death and he really, I, I can tease him all over the place and I can tease you about him. He texted me tonight, he had graduation in Lowell. And the rain held off, so he was able to get graduation. So I, I, I feel as a connection to him that's just amazing to me. And of course, Joe, I've worked with Joe before. And Joe really is, he, he brought a level of calmness because of the humanity and the human, the way he views the world and is able to communicate that to people. Really, it, it helps every, it helps everyone. When they have any kind of an issue, whatever it's gonna be, even if it's contentious. And, and you go see Joe, and Joe's like a big teddy bear. So, you know, he, he kind of gets you reflecting and thinking about things a little differently. And if you notice, he doesn't say yes. He doesn't say yes, but he's gonna be coaching you next year, so I'm not gonna tell you what he says. But he definitely says, gets people calm, and then he takes them to the next level. So, yeah, so it's been, it's been an interesting experience for me. And I think I, I might always say, Helen, you will love this, especially, I, I don't mean to just reference Helen, but, you know, Helen muscled me like crazy. I, I thought I was stronger than that, but she got me. And, and I think Helen, I think I'm always gonna say I'm off Brookline, what people say. Because there is, there is, and I was even talking before about, you know, next week's my last week. And, and I was saying to people that I talked with, we gotta get this done, we gotta get that done, we gotta get this other thing done. Hey, lighten up, they said, you're out of here in a week. I know, but we have to get these things done. And last but not least, do you realize the treasure you have in Betsy Fitzpatrick? I, I really, I, I'm not just saying...
And Robin, and Robin. Let's not leave her, but Betsy does.
Betsy, because I don't work that closely with Robin. Betsy is a real, honest to God treasure. She is a treasure. She wants no credit. She, she hates it when I compliment her. But, I mean, she, she is so thorough in her work and she's so protective. I told Linus, don't worry, you won't be able to get in trouble because Betsy will be in front of you the whole time knocking people out of the way. I mean, she, she, she texts me, you know, she gave me this placard to put on my dashboard when I go to the school so that I would be able to pack. But then she, she says to me, don't park in the handicap spot. Make sure you don't park in front of a hydrant. Yes, Betsy, yes, Betsy. She texts me home, she'll text me over the weekend, don't forget, you have a meeting at 7:30. You said you were gonna call. I got it, I got it. So she is, she, she truly is a special person. But she's Brookline, you know what I mean? And it's, in spite of all the sometimes, you know, different points of view kind of thing. Underneath it all, people care about each other here. Honest to God, care about each other. So, you know, we have two weeks, I have two weeks. And then, you know, you, you guys will, will, will do great. And I, 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 I think Linus is gonna be fabulous. I really do. He's gonna have a whole new team. We have people that are completing the hiring. And central office is, is gonna be fully hired. And I, I think a very, very, very strong central office, senior leadership team, very, very strong. And one that I think will take Brookline to the next level. No, no question, no question. I can't wait to see the wonderful things that happen. So thank you. I, I, it's, you know, people say it's been a difficult job, it's been a difficult job. I learned a lot, learned a lot about myself. It's been, as I say, a humbling experience, but, you know, it's, it's, it's great. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. And I do have to say that one of the things you brought was really the importance of relationships. And just, just as you're saying thank you to us, you mentioned all the people that you've had so much contact with and relationships have been so important. So, I mean, that, that is your leadership legacy in a way, I think, is showing us how, how relationships are so important. And you're really good at that, Jim, so thank you for that. Yeah. Okay, we're gonna move on to the executive session. So here we go.
All right.
Suzanne?
Yeah?
Can I share my screen briefly as a goodbye for...
Sure, sure.
All right, let's see if I can do this. Can you see?
That's great.
Can you see my screen?
Yeah, with the cowboy.
The cowboy.
Do, do you wanna tell, do you wanna narrate this photo, Jim? I mean, we can have a caption contest, but I thought this might be an appropriate way to end the year.
That's great. Look how old I am. Oh my...
How about Jim's last rodeo?
That's great, Ellen, that's great. Oh, boy. That's great.
That was great. Okay, I move to meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, BEU, Union A, Unit B, and Pair Professionals, and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the following meeting, June 2nd, 2021. Do I have a second to that? Thank you, Andy. Okay, we're gonna vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And we will not be returning to open session when we are done. So good night to all of our members out there in the public. And we will be seeing you sometime this summer. Who knows, but we'll figure it out. Okay, see you on the other side, everybody.